I don't see anything one way or the other.
Okay, well, since it is 2:30 and there are three of us present, let's go ahead and get started on the study session for today, which is the Parks and Recreation update, reviewing both the master plan projects and priority list as well as vehicles and equipment. And I will turn that over to Mr. Scrag or Mr. Cotton, whoever is is going to start us off here.
I'll try to make a quick introduction and then hand it off to Mr. Cotton. But commissioners, you've heard me talk about getting back to basics a number of times. You well know that we have lots of needs and not nearly as many proceeds, I guess would be a cute way to phrase that. But we, as we look at kind of our challenges and our needs, the park master plan was a strategic attempt to prioritize or at least identify some of that. Then staff came back with an exercise after the park master plan consultant completed their report to prioritize some of those. You've heard me talk quite a bit about the vehicle and equipment challenges the Parks Department in particular faces. Maybe a little bit of an oversimplification on my part, but I think public safety, police and fire have more of a routine schedule and they take priority and then parks equipment is a little bit more catch as catch can and we find ourselves in a more difficult situation there. And then we continue to have inquiries about new offerings in the in the Parks Department, whether that be from Baseball Enterprises and their proposed approach line of net generations, which is on your agenda later today. And that just really creates quite a complicated conversation on all of our part, you as the governing body and staff trying to support you. So behind the scenes, we have been trying to work through that park master plan prioritization process, allocation of funds. As you know, we have dedicated $500,000 a year from the sales tax initiative that is meant for the park improvements. And so that's at least a little bit of a funding source there. And then equipment, vehicles and equipment is even more of a challenge. But this is the beginning of that conversation. It, I think it probably segues into strategic planning as we start to have those conversations. And I'll turn it over to Chris and his staff to walk you through the park master plan and what that might look for us, look like for us in the years to come. And then at least the thought, thinking that we've been able to put into vehicles and equipment. And we'll preface it with, while we may have quantified our equipment by way of inventory and produce an annual cost estimate that doesn't necessarily make the funds available, nor does it get us kicked off with an annual equipment replacement schedule. So because we're so far behind in terms of the age of equipment. But we'll get to all that here as part of the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Parks Director Chris Cotton.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, Mayor Hodges, Jeff Hammond, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation, put this plan together for us. And so I'm going to let him speak on it first, then we'll answer any questions that that come up.
Thank you.
Jacob, this is Jacob Wood. And just, just so you know, we did get a note from Commissioner Davis. He's running about five minutes late, so he should be on any minute.
Great, thank you.
Jacob, would you be able to bring up the PowerPoint? Make and share that theme? Thank you.
You might need to speak up just a little bit more, Jeff. I'm having a hard time hearing you myself.
Um, is better?
A little bit.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jeff Hammond, Deputy Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for allowing me to give you the updates for our master plan, playgrounds and vehicles and equipment. If you want to go to the second, next slide. The master plan, we have the first six pages are the ranked summary of the master plan, all 187 items. It was adopted, the entire plan, master plan was adopted by City Commission in July of 2018. And those six pages are the priority, priority ranking that was approved in August of 2019. Just a few notes of what you're looking at, you might notice a sub rank of the second column on the left. That was our attempt to try to break down large notes for that file or for that project. Puts it in a little better breakdown for us. For example, number 17 Sunset Park had, you know, pedestrian lighting benches, crash receptacles. And I was just attempting to break that down a little more. Summary page number two, keep on going. And number 49, I just want to point out staff is aware that the recent golf, disc golf activities, there's been lots of mention about expanding disc golf at Oakdale or Indian Rock. The master plan does not include a plan to expand disc golf in the community, but number 49 does talk about disc golf signage at Lakewood Park. We certainly want to see disc golf grow in the community. We have currently have two courses at Thomas Park and Lakewood Park, and we're not opposed to adding more. However, it would raise questions about funding and where we would and how that would fit into the master plan. And page three, four, five and six, just that summary continuing on. There's any questions about any of those?
Does anyone have any questions about those items for myself? I'm going to wait until the end of the presentation to ask some questions. But if any of the other commissioners have questions, please jump in now.
Commissioner Davis, just as a quick review, these are ranked more by staff input or citizen input?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Well, this is Mike Scrag. The, the park master plan certainly had a healthy citizen input component to it, but it did not provide prioritization. So then we came back at, as a staff and presented to you, presented to the governing body at that point. Kind of some matrix criteria, some weighting criteria to use to further prioritize the list. And so then we ran that through that that matrix that was agreed upon, reported that out to the, to the governing body. And then that subsequently was adopted. So I'm trying to do two things at once.
So is that the process that resulted in this master plan ranked summary, or was that a secondary process?
No, that was the process that resulted in that ranked summary.
Okay.
The categories that we identified to factor into that scoring maintenance were in the benefits category, promoting economic development, quality of life, increasing asset management and improving fiscal stewardship. And the feasibility category, it was ease of implementation, impact on future budgets, low cost to implement, urgency to complete, importance to community, community unmet need, intensity of use. And that came from the park master plan data, level of quality and park district rating, which was another component coming out of the park master plan. So there's about a dozen or so different criteria that were agreed upon and weighting that was agreed upon. And then that's how we conducted that exercise to get to that prioritized list.
Thank you.
This slide is the projects we have completed.
Again, Mike Scrag jumping in here, but I think from prior conversations, you may recall, and then just looking at that prioritized list, you'll, you'll see that the things that ended up with high priority are what I would call maintenance items. I mean, getting our house in order more so than new amenities or new improvements. And I think you'll see that as well in terms of the list of what we've completed so far.
Onto playgrounds. As you can see, we, we compiled quite a bit of data. Brett Lamer, Rick Martin put in quite a bit of work to give a historical background. And also I need to mention Cindy Lamer as well, putting in quite a bit of work to find a historical record of what we have put in and what they've been updated. Rick and Brett are available on the call. If we have questions about playgrounds. So we have two slides of a historical playground information. And then we're on to kind of a 10-year replacement plan.
What, I'm sorry, what were when we agreed in principle to the baseball project last year before COVID, did the baseball related projects sort of de facto come off this list? Or did we still leave them?
Your question is pre-COVID, so kind of that, that broader list, or that broader scope of a project? I don't know if they came off the list, but there was a recognition that they addressed, you know, a handful of items throughout the list. Some of them were proposed improvements that were above and beyond the items that were on the, our adopted priority list. And then some of them more directly address some of the issues and maintenance items on the list. But we didn't, we didn't, we hadn't taken them off of that prioritized list. It was just an opportunity to possibly have additional proceeds from the private sector to help address some of the items on the list.
Thank you.
They're ranked as number 164 on the list, sir.
Oh, thank you. I was, I was looking real fast. Appreciate that. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
And so that, that would represent the work that's currently being done by Baseball Enterprises. But if we're we're talking pre-COVID, then that was improvements to Bill Burke and the remainder of the ball field. So I think you'll see other items throughout the list that would be, could have been addressed if we were able to go forward with that full scope.
And just speaking for myself, I think it might be helpful. One, if we could get a higher resolution copy of that list, like if you have the original Excel file that could be converted to a PDF or something like that, and maybe include a column or some sort of highlighted designation for things that would be one, have already been completed, two, would be completed by the net generation project, or three, would be completed with the Baseball Enterprises project, if that makes sense, so that we can kind of see what's still in the mix that needs to be done that wouldn't, that hasn't been addressed and would not be addressed by either one of these two projects.
We can do that.
Thank you.
And going, continuing on, we have recently improved, recently improved playgrounds. EWF under surfacing is just so you're aware, engineered wood fiber, I believe, if feel free for Brett or Rick to correct me. Moving on to the 10-year replacement plan. I want to point out the asterisk under Kenwood Park and Centennial South. Those are listed in the master plan as does Destination Parks. To put in a Destination Park. Kenwood Park would be in conjunction or near the tennis project.
That would be to remove the playground that's already there near the Eric Stein stage?
I believe that is the, that is correct. We have a newer park at Oakdale. We also have a Olivia's Playground, which is close, which is not our playground, of course.
Now, is the one the kids play on during River Fest, is that one you consider in Oakdale or can I maybe get the two of them mixed up?
Yeah, sir, there, there's a small playground just behind the train over on the Kenwood Park sign. That's the playground that we're discussing on the
Yeah, appreciate that distinction.
Yes, sir. Um, to be clear, the Destination Playgrounds, those are notated in the master plan. However, their cost is much more significant than what we have traditionally spent. So we don't, I, we don't have costs on those playgrounds yet, but generally, if we were to go forward with that playground, those playgrounds are in these several hundred thousands of dollars apiece. So what you've been provided is the cost of our regular maintenance or our regular playground replacement. If we get to a point to come forth with a Destination Playground, that would be a separate conversation.
I, I guess I'm just not quite understanding the, the 10-year replacement plan as it's presented. So are we attempting to get to a point where we're swapping out playground equipment? And upgrading playground equipment every 10 years? And these are the projected dates of completion? And what, does that continue like into the future so that when we get to Magnolia Soccer and Sunset in 2032, well, then the next year will, it will bring us back in 2033 to like Lakewood and Riverside?
Brett, would you like to speak to that?
I can.
Okay. This is Brett Lander, if anybody. This is only for 10 years. We have more playgrounds that are, what are listed here. So after Magnolia Soccer actually goes to some that aren't listed here. In total, we have 20 playgrounds and we are not trying to get them in years. We're just trying to get a 10-year plan started, but after that 10-year plan is over, we still have playgrounds that won't have been touched at that point.
Thank, thank you. I think so.
Yeah, in fact, I think the next slide might help
Yeah.
context to this conversation. And part of the difficulty is, as Brett mentioned, having 29 playgrounds in the park system. If they all have a 15-year useful life, then we need to be on a schedule of two playgrounds a year, just to keep a rolling schedule of replacement within the useful life of the, of the playground equipment. So that, that's kind of factored into that 10-year plan. It's financially, it's factoring into my budgeting considerations in terms of if we were going to get our house in order, how would we do that? And we would find a way to be able to do two playgrounds a year in a continuous rolling cycle.
Thank you. Mr. Hammond, if you'd like to can, continue.
Sure. If you'd like to move to the next slide. Showing a historical record of special parts funding. You know, this represents the one-third of the Alcoholics Liquor Fund that Parks and Recreation receives. Money that can be used for the purchase, establishing, maintenance or expansion of a park recreation services, programs, facilities. Just to give you that. The next slide is some of our master plan projects we're working on. And we have five years, five or six years planned for this year. Please note on these pages, the next five slides or so, that the funding source either is our sub CIP expense for sales tax, general fund expense, or sometimes there are no expense. And of course, we're looking, taking the approach that we're trying to address them by rank, by priority. But at times you'll see, you'll, we find that as needs or funding opportunities arise, necessary to reconsider the priority of items on an ongoing basis. So for this year, you can see we've already, our number 48, which is ranked 48 for Hawthorne Playground. We're working on that right now. However, we purchased that equipment in 2018, 19, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I shouldn't answer. Maybe Rick or Brett can answer that better than I. And then, of course, number 73, addressing our drainage issues at Bill Burke Park. And want to move to the next slide, 2022. As we project into the future, looking at estimated expenses for each project. Some of these, Jerry Ivy for this year, Jerry Ivy Park is depending on the decided course of action. Depending, and the expense there is quite large under 9B to try to address Jerry Ivy Pond. The RFQs came in last Thursday. They were and they're under, currently under review right now for the request for qualifications as to how we repair Jerry Ivy Pond.
And just to clarify, that's, that's basically for consulting and design services to help identify a possible solution or modification and help us put together a design and a cost estimate. So that's step one. Once we get through that review and design, we may know a little bit more about the proposed solution and resulting costs.
Because we have, I mean, I remember we talked about this, I think, maybe like back in 2019? In terms of when we were getting like the, the project we were going to do to satisfy the EPA fine, and it was just coming back and it wasn't what we wanted to do, just wasn't enough. Did we commit at that time to maintaining the pond at Jerry Ivy? Or I, I know there was some discussion at the time about utilizing that area for a, perhaps a different purpose? And is that something that we'll get from the RFQs? Once, where once we've selected a designer or have we, is that conversation closed?
Uh, no, I wouldn't say that it's closed at all. I think the, the RFQs are for someone, for a consultant that can help us identify more so if we want to keep the pond or reconfigure the, the footprint or the size of the pond, what that might look like. And then when we see what that looks like and what that costs, and the rest of that conversation is from a cost benefit standpoint, is that preferable? Or do we, we want to repurpose that entire area or have a smaller footprint? So to be able to have an informed conversation, we felt like this is the first step in, in bringing in outside expertise to help us size up what options might be and what they might cost.
Thank you.
So the, the amount to seek the consultant is roughly 19,000?
Yes, sir.
And then on the next page, we've got 450 plugged in to execute the solution. So we're taking kind of a guess at that at this point?
That, yes, sir, that's just a placeholder.
Okay.
Then, of course, depending on the direction we choose and approve, you approve, that dollar figure can go up and down. That would change other projects and change the schedule a little bit.
Yeah, I presume we have a little bit of basis for doing that because I know we looked at it. You know, a couple of years ago, when we were dealing with the EPA proposal, we talked about some possibilities there and decided at that point that there to proceed otherwise. But so I presume there's some basis for, for saying that it might cost this much.
Yeah, at the time that you're referring to, Commissioner Franz, we, we reached out to some contractors and just did some cost estimating based on linear feet of pond wall to be repaired. And I don't remember what that number turned out to be, but I do remember having sticker shock at the time. So yeah, this is very much a placeholder as we try to identify options and refine costs.
Well, you know, I just hope the 450,000 doesn't turn into 4,500,000, you know? I hope we're closer than that.
Yeah, yeah. It certainly sparked the need for additional conversation regardless.
From, from my recollection, you know, we talked about even, you know, making this, the footprint of the pond smaller. And if I remember right, that wasn't really a good solution because of the trying to get the, the flow and keeping the blue green algae out of there. If I remember right, it seemed like there was almost a majority that were for just filling the pond in. Am I miss, am I not thinking that right?
Well, I'm glad you said that because I was kind of having that same recollection myself, Mike, and you know, so I, that's, I just wanted to make sure that
Because we, I thought our discussions were that there's going to be, you know, it's going to be hard, whatever we did to keep the blue green algae down. And it was because of the, the geese, that was a, a distraction to the park for people walking through there. I'd have to go back and watch meetings, but I would have, I would have almost thought that our consensus was that we're, we're leaning more towards just filling it in than doing anything to it. So
But we also discussed having fountains or other water structures, if not just the wide open pond, something that might still be a Destination Park, but you know, hopefully would not be attractive to geese. Although I'm sure the, the kids love the geese, but the geese, you know, bring their own problems.
Yeah. Yeah. Now that you say that, Commissioner Hoppick, I seem to remember that there was considerable sentiment for filling it in and doing a you know, as Commissioner Davis says, a lower scale project that would still be attractive and perhaps a lot less expensive than rehabilitating or rebuilding the existing pond. I think that is the way I remember it being left from watching the meeting. That was, I think, before I was on board, but
And Mike Scrag here, my recollection was that there certainly was receptivity to that possibility. I, I felt like we went away with some homework in terms of could we come up with a smaller footprint? What might it, and that was all based on the assumption that and the, the, the cost was going to be more than we wanted to bear. And we were looking to bring in some expertise to tell us what it might take to shore it up as is, what it may take for a smaller footprint. But if there's, you know, more consensus than that about filling it in, we could dispense with looking at options and pursue filling it in. But I took, I took that more as, it was certainly in the realm of possibility and we needed to bring back more detail for you to make that decision.
If you, if you're waiting for a response, my response would be, you know, make, look at that, but also have some ideas of what we're going to do with it so that we could probably do all that in one fell swoop, you know, fill in the part we're not going to use, reconstruct the part we are. So that park's not left in limbo for two or three years.
Right. Understood.
You know, Mike, why don't, why don't we go back and, and revisit that meeting and see exactly how that was left? Because I, I, you know, I'm a little, I just observed the meeting, but I'm a little confused as to what that outcome finally was.
Okay. We can certainly do that before we bring forward a, or we execute a contract.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely want to discuss as a, as a, as a group where we've kind of see that going before we start spending significant dollars on consulting or engineering or anything.
Okay.
Because I, I see a lot more minuses to doing something with that and leaving it a pawn than I do pluses.
I, I would, yeah, the ponds are problematic.
Yeah.
I mean, to say, to say the least. So yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Hoppick.
That's helpful. We'll, we'll follow up and, and get back with you before proceeding any further.
Thank you.
You, let's continue on to 2023. For your review and twenty-four. And, um, one item of note under two thousand twenty-five. Um, there's a large expense there for Indian Rock Lodge. To kind of turn that into a community center similar to Friendship Center or Carver Center. So that, uh, that's going to have to have some work and we don't have a definitive scope of work yet. Possibly a multi-year project.
Before we move on to the next phase of your presentation, I assume that's where we're going with the, uh, the equipment upgrades. I've got just a couple of questions and, um, observations, just in terms of reviewing the park's master plan. And I'm glad you specifically mentioned the disc golf because I was the one who's met with the disc golf group and, and had some conversations with them. But in looking back at the, the, the master plan, to me, it's, it seemed to indicate a real citizen preference, um, away from organized sports. That's not to say that we don't need the tennis complex or we don't need the baseball upgrade because, I mean, those I look at almost as economic development incentive tools, but the walking and biking trails, um, park shelters and picnic areas. Um, and I think that for a comparatively modest investment, when we compare, you know, what we would need to put into tennis courts or, um, baseball fields. You know, you look at your pickleball and, and, and footsaw and skateboarding and disc golfing and, you know, maintaining our hiking trails, um, better and I just, I, 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 I really feel like we need to acknowledge that, um, there are a lot of Salinans out there that we don't necessarily get a lot of, um, emails from and that aren't organized. Uh, you know, to kind, when, when they have a, a, a project that's important to them particularly to, um, you know, to advance that conversation. And when I look at the statistics with this golf, I mean, the participation nationally, it's just off the chart. And with some of these other alternative sports too, so, um, I just, I, I think it's really important that we keep those sports in mind. As, you know, as people turn toward different ways to get physical activity and, and have fun. I, I walk Lakewood every day, every day they're, they're playing disc golf. I drive by the skateboard park probably three times a week. There are always people at the skateboard park. And, um, I can't say that for the soccer fields. And I noticed that we've already completed three items for the soccer fields. And in the last two years, I haven't seen a single team on the soccer field. So I'm getting so frustrated when I see some of our facilities are just getting used up and used so hard. And, you know, we aren't doing anything to accommodate that need. And then I look at the soccer fields and I literally never see anybody on there. So I just wanted to, um, make that plea that we take a look at, um, you know, at, at some of the things that where we could get a big return for a modest investment. Um, but yeah, those soccer field projects, I think were one seventy-one, one seventy-five and one eighty-one. I see people walking there, see kids using the playground equipment, haven't seen a soccer game in my memory at the soccer fields.
You know, I, I would like to, uh, add a comment there if I might. Number one is it strikes me that this golf has a lot, had a fair amount of participation. And I would agree the times I've been at Lakewood Park, there's almost always somebody playing this golf. Um, uh, you know, and, and, and just looking at it, it looks like it's a relatively low investment to provide that facility. Uh, now maybe I'm wrong, maybe those holes cost millions of dollars. But, uh, it just looks like it would be something that would be not difficult to expand. And if there's a lot of demand for it, maybe that's something we should consider. With respect to the plan being a little bit more oriented towards facilities rather than participatory. You know, a lot of that depends on how the discussion with the groups was guided. And if this was looked at as a plan for facilities improvement, facilities maintenance, then that's what you're going to see at the tail end. Um, so I, I, um, I take that with a little bit of grain of salt. I mean, for, you know, the, the result is, is right after we adopt this plan with this priority list and, you know, baseball facilities listed down in the middle of the priority list, it becomes a high priority. Because there's a group that is very interested in participatory sports and what it takes to support that. So I, you know, I think we have to look at this plan with a, a little bit of a grain of salt because we don't know exactly how the priorities were determined and how that discussion was guided.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or remarks?
If I could, you know, for, you know, we're, we're looking at a lot of projects that attract people uh, either to the city or an organized sports, but you know, we have a large percentage of our population over the age of fifty-five. And they need, you know, the more simple, low-cost neighborhood-based opportunities for, for exercise. Uh, you know, and somebody, you know, my age, uh, you know, just a place to go walk in the park, you know? It's very low tech, but very enjoyable. Uh, you know, so I see the walking trail, you know, things we've been talking about for, for a long time. Uh, like the, the, the disc golf, uh, uh, you know, I can still play that. I just too cold and windy recently, but, uh, you know, relatively low cost. Uh, and, and they're, you know, amenities that, you know, are unique to, to neighborhoods and people come out and use them. I think, you know, we're looking at a lot of facilities that aren't being used much because they're rundown. Uh, you know, kind of like a restaurant like Yaya's downtown, build it and guess what? They do show up. Uh, so a lot of our, our usage, I think, is reflective of the facilities not having been kept up in the shade.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, yeah, just real quick, I think there's, there's a fine line between, you know, keeping up what we have, which is one of the things we obviously need to do. When we look at some of the restroom facilities and our parks and some of that, it's not very becoming if you're taking, uh, you know, children to the park and needing to use those and so on, so forth. Um, and priorities change fairly frequently. I mean, uh, disc golf has come up, um, uh, pickleball has become something I think that's a lot more advantageous to our community than probably back when this, what year was this done? Can anybody answer when the survey was done?
Didn't we receive it in two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
It was eighteen.
Probably the bulk of the interviews I would guess were occurring in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
But I, but I know pickleball has become, uh, uh, much more popular. I know they play it at, at the Y on a couple nights and I believe the field house also opens up and, and allows it just during certain timeframes. I think some type of outdoor pickleball, the foosball, um, is used by a, a certain demographics. And another thing that I've seen use some is a one-ball handball, uh, one-wall handball, uh, court. So things change over time and, and if we could somehow try to weigh all those in too, I think we need to, so. And that's all I had.
Yes.
Thank you. And if we're ready to move on, bring the presentation back up, we talked about vehicles and equipment in parts of recreation. Uh, specifically, we're talking about mowers and vehicles. All right, this is, there's two pages of our current mower inventory. And these are in parks and our cemetery and our golf course. Um, again, Rick Martin and Brett Lamer are available to talk about, uh, any questions you might have. Also, uh, Sportsman, our golf course superintendent is also, also on the call for golf course related mower questions. And we can just go through the inventory. Um, as you hopefully recall, um, in two thousand twenty, we did not buy mowers for golf or parks. And the next slide would be the most recent, more recent purchases. And the next slide after that will be the, when has our purchase in the last ten years?
Could the current and future budgets for the next three years, uh, include replacing the mowers at the top of the list and, and I have a page number, but the current mower inventory, those that are approaching their life cycle. Are we automatically putting them in the proposed CIP to be replaced?
Um, Mike's great again, and it does, do future budgets include that? Not in any organized way would be my answer. Uh, you may recall that I referred to our, our vehicles and equipment approach as whack-a-mole. And that's what we're trying to address here is, and in part, the reason that we provided that ten-year, uh, history is just kind of to try to demonstrate the, the unpredictable nature of the way we've been funding equipment, just both in terms of what has, uh, made it through that budgeting process and, um, I, I, my sense is we don't have a replacement schedule to factor into the budget like you might be expecting and may have just described. We're doing a lot more catch as catch can. Um, our effort so far is to flesh out what that might look like, to then identify on an annual basis. What it would take as an annual allocation to be able to be in a position like you described. Um, and that's a kind of a two-part, uh, challenge. One is getting the schedule put together and identifying that value. But we have, that, that assumes we're on a rotating schedule and is aged as some of our equipment is, we're kind of behind the eight ball. Uh, and even being on a, on a ten-year replacement schedule because some of it's going to age out before we can get to it.
Wow. I'm, I'm just, I'm glad we're having this conversation and I'm glad that, that staff is taking a look at this because there, you, you guys are actively using some equipment, um, that dates from when I had a two-year-old. I mean, this stuff is old. Um, and I'm just, I'm disappointed that we haven't done it in the past, but yeah, thank you.
The, uh, next slide is a, what we tend to, we put together as a, what we've had put together as a replacement schedule with an annual cost. And the second, the next page shows that summary of the aver- average cost and the, uh, total cost and total annual cost.
Replacement schedules all coordinated with that five hundred thousand we've got available each year? Uh, if we look at the facilities we've got planned and the equipment we've got planned, does it all fit within that five hundred thousand dollars a year? Each year?
The five hundred thousand dollar parks allocation, we've, we've, on previously, we've been trying to fund, uh, vehicles and equipment out of the CI, the, the sub-CIP rather than the five hundred.
Right, okay.
The, that park master plan schedule that we showed previously, um, some of those don't hit five hundred thousand, but a lot of them are in that, that five hundred thousand range and I said, we'd flesh out additional details to get to the five hundred as we get closer to those out years.
So what we're doing is we're presuming that the mower fleet schedule, we will be able to fit in with the rest of the equipment in the CIP. Uh, when we've never been able to do that before, it seems like higher priority needs come up. And so, you know, we buy a police car or fire truck instead of replacing that nineteen ninety-one mower.
I agree.
You know, so, so, so I'm not sure that that's a workable strategy. It hasn't worked yet.
Well, I, I'm not proposing this as a workable strategy. I'm, and, and, and saying we've articulated, we're now starting to articulate the problem that we're trying to solve and I'm still working on a solution. Uh, but as conversations about, we, we want an additional amenity, we, you know, we have other priorities. This never enters that conversation. And so we can't, we can't plan to it, we can't budget to it until we've articulated.
Yeah, and, and to Commissioner Hoppick's point, when we're this far behind on what we've got, it's kind of disingenuous to try to do something new.
But, but by the something new, you mean what specifically?
I, well, I'm just saying is, is if, if we're serious about addressing this equipment issue and we're going to try to take it out of our normal system equipment CIP, the sales tax CIP and keep, stay out of that five hundred thousand dollars for, you know, replacement or expanding facilities. That's the same thing we've been doing for years and it has never worked. Okay, obviously it doesn't work. So we're either going to have to change the way we prioritize that group of equipment to give this a higher priority. Or we've got to find some other way to do that. Uh, you know, I, it, it strikes me that as a conversation is structured now, it's kind of like we're going to, we're, we've got the new five hundred thousand dollars a year out of the special sales tax to additional needs. And I know there's a, uh, there's obviously a list of those, a substantial list. But then we've got the equipment issue, which has always been slated to come out of a different, um, pot. And we've never, we don't seem to get to it. Uh, what is going to be different about that moving forward? And I'm not, that's a rhetorical question for us to think about, I think. I don't expect an answer. But we're going to have to change something if we're going to actually make some progress on this.
Yeah, I, and Mike's great here and, uh, you're absolutely right. I mean, if you go back and look at our past ten years, uh, year to year, it's been anywhere from zero to a little over a hundred thousand, but it hasn't been predictable in any given year. So, you know, part of my thinking is if we, if we can put together a replacements schedule, we can amortize that and, and come up with an annual number to try to budget to and hold to, then staff can start to acquire equipment and, and schedule replacement in a predictable way rather than, uh, catch as catch can. And it, it at least creates some predictability that we might be able to budget to. But you're absolutely right. It, it could either come out of the five hundred thousand and that then directly impacts, uh, what we can do in the way that the park master plan items, or we have to start factoring it into future budget. Um, in a more, uh, uniform and predictable way.
Yeah, you know, one option, one option might be to use the special parks fund. That is in the past though, been used to do largely facility upgrades, uh, and, and if we reduce that, then that digs into that five hundred thousand dollars a year, which is kind of intended to do the same sort of thing. So, you know, uh, we've got too much piled on a plate that's a little bit too small.
And, and, and we've taken that approach this year. We allocated some of the funds out of the special parks, uh, for equipment. But as, you know, that gets back to that inventory of playgrounds and the lifecycle of playgrounds and the need to replace to about two each year, which will be doing good to fund those with special parks proceeds on an annual basis.
Are we currently, when we're looking at other equipment, whether it's police, fire, whatever, do we have that inventoried? And have it on a replacement schedule now?
Not nearly as, uh, as much as I would like.
It, it almost seems to me like, uh, to get a grip on, on our, on our pro, on our issue is we're going to have to take the, the equipment that we know we're going to have to replace on a regular, when I say a regular basis, whether it's every five or every ten years. That needs to be put onto a schedule so we can kind of look, you see some years like on parks, we're spending zero and some we're spending a hundred. Well, that average is out to fifty thousand a year. That doesn't buy you very many mowers and, and other equipment.
Well, and I'm not to put, uh, Deputy C. Major Wood on the spot, but that is an initiative that we started as staff to try to, uh, to have each department inventory those recurring equipment items and try to, parks frankly is a, is a step or two ahead in terms of being able to inventory their equipment and, and provide the information they're presenting you today. But the intention is to be able to do this across the organization.
I don't know. Is there a particular reason that vehicles, uh, and equipment of this type are budgeted outside of the rest of a particular department's budget? Uh, it goes, it seems like the park equipment is always, you know, it, it was coming out of the park. equipment is always, you know, it was coming out of the park, the same fund uh, that was like buying grass seed. Uh, they must say, well, let's move it. I mean, should it be part of that, that department just needs a bigger budget? If, if, if it can't function without those pieces of equipment. It, it's kind of like a, a, an item that we have to buy, spend money on, but it doesn't belong to any one particular group of, or subset of the budget. It just sort of floats.
Well, and I'm speculating here a little bit, but I think the logic in Commissioner Franz may be able to speak to it better than I can, but I, I assume part of the logic previously was without a regular replacement schedule, without smoothing out that replacement cost on an annual base, basis across a department, we were trying to be mindful of identifying, addressing the greatest need for the organization. If we just said each department has X and it, and it doesn't correspond to their replacement schedule, and we have some departments in a better position to uh, purchase equipment and, and replace than others. And so, you know, without, without a replacement schedule that we can refer to department by department, it probably doesn't make sense to give them a, a budget allocation within their own budgets.
Okay. And, and before Commissioner France, before you answered, I mean, dovetail one more question. Roughly in your experience, how many budget years would it take to get to that point where, where those numbers have been smoothed out and are predictable?
Um, I'm sorry. Is that a question for me or Commissioner?
Well, uh, Commissioner Franz, but you can certainly feel free to answer it.
Well, in, in terms of scheduling, we're very mindful of the lifecycle of the equipment. And so, you know, motor graders and, and other big ticket items may have a longer useful life, but um, so we've, we've been looking at a 10-year planning horizon, just because anything beyond that gets a little less predictable. Um, but the other thing to consider here is when we, when we amortize all these costs, that assumes that our fleet is in a good position to begin with, to be able to patiently wait for that replacement cycle. When we start in, in a hole, um, yeah, that annual cost number is, is a good reference point, but you know, I, I'm not, I, I can't confidently say that some of those items can wait till 2028, 29 and 30 to be replaced. So we may have an upfront financial challenge before we can get to a predictable replacement schedule.
Okay. Now, if I might, the, the, the whole idea behind, I believe, and it was in place when I came on board too. So you have to take this as um, uh, I guess for what it's worth, but I was told that, that those equipment items were segregated and, and when I first came on board, it was all in the general fund or in the utilities fund for the respective groups, because the manager at that time wanted to be able to see all of the city equipment that was being replaced together so that we could uh, determine priorities, you know, between departments. It's kind of what Mike was saying. If you have X number of dollars in a department, then they think that's theirs. And if they don't spend on equipment, then they think they can spend it on somewhere else. And so the manager at that time said, let's take this out, put it in a separate pot and let's try to keep, keep the departments thinking in a little more global basis in terms of what my department needs or another department needs. I can recall um, occasions where we would uh, I say we generically, the manager would ask that departments get all the vehicles they were frozen to replace and we'd park them in the, at that time bicentennial center parking lot and we'd have a beauty contest for lack of a better word. And you go around, you see one pickup truck that doesn't have floorboards in it anymore. And the other one, uh, the competing truck is obviously in very good shape. You know who's going to win the beauty contest? We're going to replace the older, more worn out piece of equipment. So it was way to try to think more globally. And, and also at that time, you know, they were, we were trying to get a more comprehensive schedule as to, and from time to time in some departments, that kind of trans, trend came, came to fruition. Um, solid waste used to have a really uh, pretty good schedule and it's varied by, by department. You know, in the police department, you know that every year you're going to replace from four to six cars typically. You know, the fire department, we have an ambulance. We maybe have one other vehicle with a fire truck occasionally. Um, you know, um, uh, street sweepers, we knew were on a schedule of about 15 years and you know, so on and so forth. But uh, it's, it's been very difficult and challenging to try to get that done on a citywide basis. So you could look at the complete list. One of the issues is, is some vehicles simply wear out faster than you think they will. They'll, they get used a lot more. And so something might be on a schedule for replacement in 2029, for example, and you discover that by 2025, it's shot. Well, you've got to be ready to make those adjustments on the fly. So the, the plan is never perfect, but I appreciate the fact that they're trying to get to that point. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it was simply a way of consolidating all of those requests um, and, and being able to assess them as a group outside of the other budget decisions. So that, you know, the equipment didn't compete with staff requests and so on, so on and so forth. Uh, and, and it originally there was a given amount every year that we'd budget for equipment replacement. I can't remember what it was. That is gone by the wayside at this point, but if there was a fixed amount that was set aside for equipment every year and we simply tried to fit within it.
That, and that would have been my next question. Uh, you know, were those aggregate, you know, need department needs ever lumped together into a, a budget amount that would have been enough to pay for it? And you, and you just answered that question.
Yeah. I wouldn't say it was enough to pay for it. There were always requests that did not get funded. Matter of fact, normally quite a few, but.
So I don't generally like to bring you a problem without a solution, but I'm in the context of kind of strategic planning and the context of uh, some of the decisions we're making, th- this is um, kind of behind, it has been behind the scenes historically and it felt like it, it certainly factors into our department challenges and our planning going forward. And, you know, I started this with uh, recognition that we have more needs than proceeds. And this is just another example of that. But um, if we're going to plan, if we're going to kind of overcome some of these challenges uh, from a planning perspective, I think this is a level of detail where we start. Um, you know, backing up a little bit to the park master plan, I, I don't disagree with Mayor Hodges' comments or anyone else's for that matter. If you look at uh, the prioritization of the park master plan and, and the items that staff has shown, they are very much maintenance items. They're, they're not organized sports programming, nor are they facility additions. They are very much uh, maintenance items. And that's not to say that we, you as the governing body can't reprioritize that. Um, and to me, one of the shortcomings of the park master plan was it did, it did a very good job of pulling the community and identifying possibilities, but there were more possibilities than, than uh, funds and it's necessary to make some very hard prioritization decisions going forward.
You know, uh, Mr. Scragg, I, I, I think that was an ac- very accurate statement. What we thought was it would be preferable to have whatever we have now well kept up, looking pretty and working, you know? You, you want to have a bathroom that flushes, a water fountain that has water coming out, uh, you know, picnic benches that don't give you nail marks when you sit on them. Uh, and it was a good plan. I mean, people are very appreciative of nice looking, functioning stuff. And we thought we were falling behind on that. And we wanted to upgrade that first. It was certainly lower cost with a, with a potential big bang for a large part of the population.
Yeah, that, that's a really good point. Part of that conversation was what's the most impactful for, you know, the, the least investment on the front end as well. That was one of the criteria.
I might, might chime in just a, a little bit more is, as I recall, it was about $500,000 a year out of the general fund that was used to pay for general fund department's equipment. There was the special recreation money, which was used for those projects. Uh, and of course, utilities supported their own. Over the years, that, that general fund amount as we received, as we've gotten more and more pressure on other expenses, that has slowly been moved to the sales tax. And now it's all in the sales tax. Uh, the thing was back in, I don't know, 2008 or whenever, when we first started moving capital into the sales tax fund. Uh, the initial intent was to take things that were significantly larger than we could normally handle out of the general fund amount. And we used a guideline of somewhere, anything that, any single piece of equipment that costs more than say 50 to $80,000. So we're talking about large trucks, street, street sweepers and so on. We'd take a sales tax fund out of a separate pot. Well, that is kind of now, over the years with pressure on the general fund, we've gradually moved more and more of this item into the special sales tax fund. And now it's essentially all there and we are no longer investing in capital out of our general fund.
No, and I think this is, I, I think that this needs to be, one of the things we discuss at our strategic planning. Uh, Mr. Scragg has mentioned, you know, aligning our, doing, you know, some financial prioritization in a strategic planning setting because you know, when, when we are, um, you know, talking about investing in the, the bigger new facilities and yet you just see us falling further and further behind on, on, on things we need to, to maintain our parks just as they are. I mean, I think we need to have a conversation about are, are, are our expectations as expressed in the budget realistic to maintain the kind of parks that we want to have? Um, and just seeing how many acres of parkland that each employee is, is, is responsible for and um, looking at our investment in parks compared to peer communities. Um, you know, I think, I think that that's something that, that, that we need to talk about. Does anyone, do any of the other commissioners have questions or comments at this time about the presentation? Or Jeff, were, were you pretty much finished or did we still have some, another slides to go over?
A few more.
Okay.
A few more slides I can quickly go through. Uh, next slide is, uh, this is what we're planning on re- replacing uh, with this year's bids that came in. Uh, these are the items that are on our current inventory that we would like to replace. Uh, the next slide is the bids that did come in. Uh, it's a summary of the bids that did come in. Uh, you notice that we are planning on, we would like to be able to rebid two of these items. And you can see where Mr. Scragg talked about, we broke down purchases out of special parks fund and also sales tax sub-CIP um, to try to attempt to get us back to better inventory. And the last three or four pages are about vehicles, a similar exercise with our vehicles in parks of recreation. With an annual cost. And a replacement schedule.
Really have a 32-year-old truck that is 20 years past its life?
Yes, we do.
Kudos to the maintenance department, nobody else.
Yep.
And the last slide is just the pet, the vehicle purchase we, vehicle purchases we made over the last five years. And that is the end of slides.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hammond. I appreciate it. Even if you don't get to be the bearer of particular, good news. We don't, we definitely don't mean to, to, to shoot the messenger, so to speak, but this is obviously something that we've got to get. Um, we've, we've, we've got to figure out a solution going forward so that, you know, 10 years down the road, we're not having the same conversation um, with, you know, the different commission is still trying to figure this out. Um, so thank you. Yes, Commissioner Davis?
With the information on those last two slides, is it possible to add up what we know we need and kind of create a graph, you know, with a certain amount of money dedicated per year and a hypothetical future budget that brings you up to where you can then level it off? It just looks like that's enough information to create a graph and figure out how many years you needed, what amount to get you where you want to, want, want to be. Have to be the one to figure it out, but.
Yeah, that is kind of what we're trying to build to here, both just in terms of a, an average number. That's kind of the easier calculation to make. The harder one to, to make a more educated uh, guesstimate of each piece of equipment and when it needs to be replaced and how much it'll cost at that time. But that, that's what we're trying to gather all this data to, and not just in the parks department, but across the organization to try to, whether it's graphical or whether it's a spreadsheet with uh, dollars. My, my goal is within reason to level that out as much as possible. So then instead of on an annual basis, we're having conversations about these move, numbers moving around significantly, come up with a number that is managed, that we can manage to and have it be routine enough that we get this part of our operations smoothed out.
Right, or, or we just.
Flattened out.
Right. With these numbers, if we just pulled our hand out of the air, okay, every year we're going to spend $800,000 on equipment, which should get us to a point where it levels out and then you just fill in how many years that is. And it's biting the bullet until we get to where we want to be.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Like i- if we did start doing, you know, $500,000 a year and we had to do that for two or three years, but then we knew from that point on that it was going to be, and, and you make the point, things break down, but then if we knew that it was going to be $150,000 every year, somewhere close to that number that we could then start budgeting for that.
Um, understood. We were trying to work to that um, across the organization. Like I said, I think parks is a little, is a step or two ahead in terms of inventorying their equipment. You may recall that we had a very similar conversation and it, this level of detail or higher for sanitation fund, they, they were able to um, kind of inventory their equipment and their life cycles. And they're in a little bit better position, both in terms of the breadth of their equipment and, and their financial ability to fund that. But uh, that's what we're trying to get to for all the departments.
Thank you. Anyone, any other commissioners have anything before we open it up to the public? Um, I'd be happy to open this up to, um, for the public. Anyone who has questions um, would like to make any observations or remarks about our discussions today. If you could, Jacob, if you could let people know how to raise their virtual hand on Zoom, failing that, you can always flag us down so that we can get you unmuted. But um, I'd ask that you keep your remarks brief or your questions brief because it looks like we have quite a few people um, that may want to speak today. They may not.
Sure. So uh, if you would like to speak, uh, if you want to raise your virtual hand, you can go down to the bottom of your screen. If you're on a Windows machine and click the participants tab. And then when that pops up at the bottom right, you should be able to click the button that says raise your hand. If you're on a, an iPad or an iPhone, the participants tab is usually in the top right part of the screen and you, you do the same thing. I already have at least one person that requested to speak and that's uh, Ms. Jane Anderson. I will uh, go ahead and give her the ability to speak. And we'll go from.
I'm Ms. Anderson. Are you there?
Um, am I on now? Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to say thank you for letting me speak and I'm the executive director for the Friends of the River Foundation. So I'd like to speak from that viewpoint, but also from just as a citizen. Um, what I find really interesting in looking at the uh, master plan for uh, the parks is in their deal that trails were actually the number one issue. And in all our speaking, I haven't heard anyone speak to trails except for uh, some of the um, commissioners, which I do find that troubling that, that is not considered uh, a big enough issue to speak to, especially when you have a new riverway that's going to be built in just a few years and uh, putting all that pressure on the riverway or the friends to raise monies for that. I'd just like to raise that as an issue that I do think that is what a lot of people are looking for. And so. And so I hope that that will be a consideration when you're thinking about parks and rec. The other thing as a citizen that I would like to speak to is sometimes I think we call it parks and rec, but a lot of times it's treated like recreation and parks. And I don't think parks at times get a fair shake in being considered as important as recreation. I think recreation is really important, by the way. I think it brings in lots of money to our community. And I'm not downplaying that we need new tennis courts or baseball fields. That's not what I'm trying to insinuate. However, what I'd like to say that the parks play just as an important role in our community for how people view us as a community, if they think we're beautiful or not, or if there's a place to just be or a place to gather. So I think sometimes there hasn't been anyone speaking for the parks. And so I would just like to say, I think actually, I think people think they're very important, and I would just like to say, I hope that becomes more important than it has been. And I think your equipment aging is part of, um, none of us really believing that it was worth saving. So, and thinking that parks are important, but I would like to say for other community members that, that a lot of us feel it's very important. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I appreciate your observations. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Um, uh, Mr. Sean Balthazar is also have his, has his hand raised. I'll, I'll go ahead and give him permission at this time.
All right, Mr. Balthazar, are you there? Are you there?
Okay, I was trying to, I apologize.
No, no worries.
Hello, um, hello, Mayor, hello, commissioners and everybody else attending. I'm, I'm very excited to have gotten the chance to listen today. I come to you as a very avid disc golfer, and so I was very excited to hear, uh, some buzz about the sport that I love genuinely. I have recently looked into what it would take to add to some of the things that, um, I saw available in the, uh, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And I just kind of wanted to briefly comment that I think disc golf is a very viable option in that, in that it's a low cost with a, a very rapid and high rate of in, return on investment. It's something that stays around the area of seven hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars per hole of investment. And the return is in less than two calendar years to pay for each hole. Using the model of Emporia, Kansas, right down the road, uh, they bring in about ten thousand visitors a year for a disc golf tournament they have there. And, uh, and speaking with their local chamber, they, um, they have a very high return there. It's very progressive. I understand that there are a lot of sports that are coming up, pickleball. I, I see the handball court at Oakdale Park, uh, busy frequently, all of those things. And, and I, um, I applaud those who have to make the choices of these things as, as I, um, lobby for the one that is so near and dear to me. But I can, I can tell you that disc golf, um, is something that is growing at such a rapid rate that, um, I, 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 I feel the need to, um, to say something today. A couple more things, we have a local disc golf club that is, um, that I know has worked for quite some time with Parks and Recreation. And Parks and Recreation has done wonderful in listening to our local disc golf club. Our local disc golf club is contributing the funds for eighteen baskets worth of replacement at Lakewood Park. And they are currently in the process of doing that with, uh, Parks and Recreation. And so there will be some relocation of some of the baskets that are there. But still with the amount of growth that, uh, the numbers, um, we, we just don't match up. And, and, um, we're trying to make it available as the growth happens. So that's what I have to say about disc golf now, as, as far as the rest goes, I really want to give a, a large compliment to our Parks and Recreation, Recreation staff. I have seen many improvements and not just Lakewood and Thomas Parks that I obviously spend a lot of time in. But, um, Oakdale Park and Jerry Ivy Park, I've spent some time in recently. I see a lot of improvements that have happened, um, with a lot of, uh, budget restraint that has fallen on us over the last, uh, year to two years, and, uh, I, I'm very grateful, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Balthazar. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Or has questions for the commission?
I don't see any other hands at this time, uh, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you. Um, well, to bring it back to the commission, is there anything else that the commission would like to discuss in regard to our study section today? Anything's to follow up on?
Yeah, I, I think the point you made about the strategic planning is important, but I was writing notes down at the exact same time that you were probably thinking about. You know, we're having trouble deciding what to do with funding because we haven't decided what's important for us in our strategic plan. Once we decide that, then we can get a budget that reflects our strategic plan, and then the rest of this just falls in. I mean, it, it just drops in automatically. But we really have to decide what this city is going to be known for, and then go out and figure out where we can spend our money.
And I think you mentioned that a couple of years ago, maybe when you were in your, um, uh, your, your postgraduate class at, at KU, where you were like, you know, we budget to our priorities, and that really, um, that, that stuck with me, so.
Do we have a date for our planning session yet?
We do not. That, that's on me. We, we have kind of an outline that staff's trying to pull together to gather information and create graphics in preparation for that. But, um, it, it, I recognize we need to make that happen here pretty soon.
Yeah, and, uh, I just saw the, uh, kind of the rough draft today that, uh, Mr. Scragg and staff have been working on. So, um, I'll, I'll, I'll do my part to ensure that the, the process is moving forward, because I think that is a, a conversation we really, you know, we're overdue to have it. We kind of got skunked last year because of COVID, and, um, I think it'd be very helpful for us. And for future commissions. All right. Well, I guess that's it. Uh, Mr. Scragg, Mr. Cotton, do you have any, anything to leave us with? Or does this conclude our study session?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, yes, ma'am, that, that's just a present, a presentation of where we're at and the equipment that, uh, we're looking to replace in the near future. Yes, ma'am.
I have one quick question I had written here and forgot to ask. On the, uh, equipment for the golf course, does that come out of funds raised through fees at the golf course, or does that come out, out of the sub CIP also?
Debbie, do you want to speak to that as well as kind of the, the fund balance management approach? It looks like you're muted, Debbie.
Thank you. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance, yet typically the equipment purchase of the golf fund comes out of the sales tax sub CIP, because they do not typically have funding available. If they have smaller pieces of equipment, um, they, they do take those out of their operating budget, but typically any of these larger mowers and things like that come out of sales tax, just like every other department.
Okay, thank you.
And then Mike Scragg here with, uh, I guess a little bit of a recap. I, I hope you find this good conversation. I certainly do from staff's perspective. You know, I, I wholeheartedly agree that prioritization and an agreed upon approach is important. That's why we took that additional step following adoption of the park master plan. But also fully recognizing that priorities change, uh, needs arise, whether it's a maintenance item, a failure in equipment or a facility failure, whatever the case may be. And then, you know, we, we have opportunities that arise as private, the private sector steps in, whether it's baseball, tennis, disc golf, that, that just kind of take us back to those conversations. So, uh, I was really trying to provide you a little bit of perspective, uh, broader perspective, so that we as staff have some direction of how you'd like to proceed and, and give you, um, kind of that bigger picture, as you have to make some of these prioritization decisions.
You. And on that note, um, we will conclude here, and we will resume at four o'clock for the regular commission meeting. Thanks to everyone who attended, and, um, we'll see you back here shortly.
Thank you.
I see Commissioner Ryan is here.
In reaction.
Can you hear me okay?
He needs to unmute.
He's still muted, okay.
I've never done this on my phone, so it's a little bit different for me.
Gotcha. We can hear, we can hear you now, we have. I think we've got all the commissioners assembled, Ben.
Trying to put that last minute food in. I'll turn my head.
Well, hopefully, looking at the agenda, and I hate to even say it, but it doesn't look like a really long today.
Don't say that, you just put the heck on it, you know?
I know, I know.
You could probably add some executive sessions or something if everybody wants to do that.
You're, yeah, you're quite the funny guy today, Jacob, thanks a lot, yeah. All right, it looks like it's four o'clock, and we have all the commissioners assembled here. All the meeting of the March first, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order, and request from staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act, Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you, we'll proceed with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner France.
There.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Hodges.
Here. Thank you, I, before we have our moment of silence, I would just like to extend our sympathies to the families of Courtney Anne Hoffman and Carlton Jones, two citizens who died unexpected in violent deaths this week, and we'll be keeping you in our thoughts. And with that, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We don't have any awards and proclamations, which will take us to Citizens Forum, and I assume that Jacob will give us his brief instructions on how to participate in a Zoom meeting, if you're so inclined as a member of the public.
I'll unmute myself first. Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager, if you're interested in participating in the citizens' request to speak, if you could raise your digital hand, you could do that by going to the bottom of your screen and hitting the Participants tab. Once you've done that, the box should open up, and you should see your name, you can either click on your name, or click at the bottom, there should be an option to raise your hand, or if you've got a camera, if you just want to wave at us, we can pick you up that way. If anybody is interested in speaking out, if you go ahead and raise your hand.
So, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt, we're also supposed to provide an explanation of the executive session and how that works, regardless of whether we have one on the agenda or not, so, I can do that if you'd like, or, Mr. Wood.
Please, I'm fine.
So, despite joking about the possibility, we don't have an executive session on today's agenda, but nonetheless, whenever that should occur, much like we did in a physical format where the public stayed in the room and the participants in the executive session left, in a Zoom format, the public participants could stay on the call, a side room would be developed by the meeting moderator, which is the Deputy City Manager. The participants in that executive session would have the opportunity to log into that separately, the executive session would be conducted. At a appointed time, we would then come out of that executive session chat room or side room and return to that main call and pick up where we left off. So, from the public's perspective, they wouldn't need to do anything other than stay on the line, wait while the executive session is conducted, and then the governing body would rejoin that first call that the public was on all along.
Thank you for the reminder and for the explanation, Mr. Scrag. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during Citizens Forum? We'd ask that you keep your remarks to five minutes or less, and please be sure to identify yourself both by name and where you're from.
I don't see any raised hands at this time, Mayor Hodges.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, Mayor Hodges, did you want me to report on COVID?
I did, thank you, thank you.
No problem, happy to do so. I did, we do have some slides that might help to graphically show what I've been verbally reporting previously. As you may recall, the county puts out COVID statistics on more than a weekly basis, but just for the point of consistent comparison, the information that I'm reporting is based off of the reports that come out on Friday, so this would all be based on information as of February 26th. In terms of new cases, you can graphically see there the decline. The high point was September 5th at 197 new cases in a week's time, and that's progressed down to 106, 59, and most recently 55. So, as of last Friday, there were 55 new cases reported in that intervening week. Jacob, if you could go to the next slide. The next one is active cases, and again, you can see a decline there. This, as of last Friday, there were 699 active cases compared to 1,179 a week prior to that. In terms of the next slide, hospitalizations, again, a downward trend, it's kind of leveled off in the last couple of weeks, but we peaked at 34 within this reporting period on January 8th. It declined, and in the last couple of weeks, both this past week and the week prior, there were nine individuals hospitalized that were reported for Salina County. And then lastly, deaths, this graphic is a cumulative total, and so we are currently at 106 deaths as of last Friday. And that's all that I have to report, those are kind of the standard indicators that we've been tracking, and I've been reporting to you, and that the Health Department's been reporting out.
Well, it's really, really gratifying to see those numbers decline, and we'll hope that that decline continues, and thank you very much, I really appreciate that, Mr. Scrag.
I had a quick question, Mr. Scrag, is the current mandate that's set by the county, is that in effect to what, March 21st?
March 21st, and had a conversation with them this week, you know, they set that timeframe around two COVID cycles, and so that's how they ended up at March 21st, and at the moment, I think they're still remain committed to letting those two cycles run. We have weekly conversations that they, our conversation today acknowledged that, you know, other counties are increasing their mask gathering numbers, and things are changing, and the conversations will be ongoing, but at the moment, it looks like they're planning to carry forward to that March 21st date.
Okay, thank you.
If I might, might make one comment, you know, it's great the cases are down, active cases are down, current cases are down. But last summer, on August 21st, the weekly cases were at 23, and we had 85 active cases. So, we're still quite a bit above that, and you know, that active case count is kind of the, what I want to say, the bellwether, the indicator of how much, how much potential there is for reinfection in the community. At least, that's the way I interpret it, maybe Dr. Davis, Commissioner Davis, has a, has a different interpretation. So, I think we have to remain vigilant, because this thing is going to cycle and cycle and cycle, you know, until we achieve significant vaccination levels, and even then, you run the risk of, you know, mutations that will bypass the vaccine, just like with the flu, so I would caution against too much exuberance. I think it's great, I think it gives us a chance to make some decisions and perhaps lighten up moving forward, but we're not out of the woods.
Absolutely.
Your comments, Commissioner France reminded me as well, at Mayor Hodges' suggestion, I extended an invitation to Jason Tiller, and he's got on his calendar to address us directly, and the governing body directly on March 15th, so we'll put him on that agenda.
Thank you, and I appreciate you reaching out and, and making that, extending that invitation, because we haven't had the opportunity to hear from Mr. Tiller firsthand, and I thought that it might be a good idea in case some of the commissioners or members of the public that watch our meetings, but maybe don't watch the county commission meetings, would be able to ask their questions and get, and get an update from him, but in the, in the meantime, please keep wearing your masks, practicing social distancing, and washing your hands, because as, as Commissioner France noted, this is, this is far from over, and we need to do everything we can to mitigate our risk. Anyone else in regard to COVID? With that, we will move on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, public hearing for 2020 Special Assessments Projects, item 5.1A, second reading, ordinance number 21-11053, levy, leveling, leveling, special assessments for improvements.
All right, we will go ahead and open.
Mayor Hodges, before we get started, this is Commissioner Hoppick, I will need to, at this time, recuse myself from this item due to a conflict I have now.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Hoppick. We will open the public hearing, and I will turn this over to Dan Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is a carryover item from February 8th, where we got the breakdown of costs for these projects, and scheduled a public hearing for today, and second reading would be after we have the public hearing, so this sets the stage for our bond sales for this year, and to start paying off these projects that were completed in the last year or two on our, for our benefit districts. It looks like the March, today's the special, is the hearing, April 5th would be the bond, some authorizing for the bond sale, and then April 12th would actually be the bond sale, secondary to the ordinance, those are the kind of the big dates that are coming up after this. I'll be here for questions.
Do any commissioners have questions for Mr. Stack? Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Raise your virtual or physical hand if you'd like to ask a question or make a remark.
No, I don't see any hands, Mayor Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Ryan. I'd move we approve on second reading, ordinance number 21-11053, leveling special assessments for improvements.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number 21-11053 on second reading, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick. Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. That motion passes 4-0, and we will invite Commissioner Hoppick to rejoin us for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we have to close the public hearing, or does it stay open? I can't remember.
Did I, did I say I closed the public hearing before we took the action? Yeah, I forgot to say that, I'm sorry.
I can't remember, I just wanted to make sure, so we don't have to worry about this later, but I just wanted to make sure, if somebody else heard it, maybe I missed it.
And I may have forgotten to, it may have been one of those dialogues that I have in my head, and it actually makes it out to where people need to hear it, so what would you recommend I do? I'll look to Mr. Scrag and Mr. Bangston to.
I think all you have to do is the mayor's declare that the public hearing is closed, and.
All right, well, with that, I will declare the public hearing on ordinance number 21-11053 is closed, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve the minutes from last week.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2021, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner France.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to administration, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, resolution number 21-7937, expressing the intent of a governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas, to the proposal by Salina Net Generation.
All right, Mr. Cotton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges and members of the commission, Chris Cotton here, Director of Parks and Recreation. We're here today to discuss a resolution of support for the efforts of Salina Net Generation. As you are aware, the state of the tennis courts in the Salina Park system continue to deteriorate. Over the past, over the last few decades, Parks and Recreation staff have come before the commission to recommend repairs of the existing courts. Those repairs were made with the best intentions, and each repair would last a few years before the repairs failed. Those repairs have failed in the most part due to the condition of the subsurface, and not necessarily through the repair efforts of the several companies that have come to Salina to try and resolve the issues. The condition of the tennis courts has been discussed several times before the master plan project was started, and several times since it was completed and accepted by Resolution 187581. There was a strong turnout by the tennis community for the public input meetings regarding the master plan, and meetings about the tennis courts have taken place before, during, and after the master planning process. This is what leads us to this meeting today, in which Salina Net Generation would like to see a resolution of support for their efforts to move forward a new vision for tennis in the city of Salina. After the presentation given by Salina Net Generation on November 23rd, 2020, the city commission voted 5-0 in support of Resolution 20-7903 to declare all areas within the boundaries of Kenwood Drive and Midway Drive located in Kenwood Park to be eligible for naming rights. This resolution was passed in an effort to help Salina Net Generation raise funds for a new tennis complex in the heart of Salina. Located less than one half mile from the new downtown hotel, this facility would help contribute to not only increasing room nights during tennis events, but will increase downtown foot traffic, much in the same way the Fieldhouse has. Currently, Salina hosts high school state championship events for football, baseball, softball, basketball, wrestling, volleyball, and golf. Of those seven sports, six take place at city of Salina facilities. Adding a state-of-the-art tennis complex would enable the city to host seven of eight state high schools championships, enable Kansas Wesleyan access to an outstanding facility to grow their programs by having access and a facility that would allow them to bid on the Kansas Collegiate Athletic Conference Championships. A new complex would also allow the tennis citizens of Salina the opportunity to once again have nice courts and be the hub for redevelopment of recreational tennis leagues and lessons. As previously discussed, the cost to the city to rebuild the existing courts as they lie today would be in excess of $1.2 million, whereas partnering with Salina Net Generation and USD 305 would result in an estimated total cost to the city of $864,600. While it is recognized that tennis was not listed as the, at the top of the priority list, it is recognized that the tennis courts are an issue that need to be addressed. Section 2 of Resolution 19-7730 shows commission support of the master plan, and specifically makes mention that proactive and responsive maintenance that will prohibit further deterioration of certain features and amenities, as well as responding to emerging needs or priorities may change the order of repairs. The next step in this process would be for the city commission to adopt Resolution 21-77937, which would formalize the support for the efforts of Salina Net Enterprises. This project has seen support at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board level as well, and this will help the fundraising efforts of Salina Net Enterprises by solidifying the commitment of the city to help rebuild the tennis infrastructure in Salina. As the information in the blue sheet packet is lengthy, at this time, city staff would like to ask the commission to formally adopt Resolution 21-7937. Staff has prepared answers to the questions asked during the November 23rd meeting, which are contained in the packet. Both staff and members of Salina Net Generation, specifically Clark Renfro and Samantha Angel, would like to open this topic up for discussion at this time, thank you.
Yeah, if it's all right with the other commissioners, I'd like to invite any members of Salina Net Generation to speak. And I see Ms. Angels, and I see Mr. Renfro, so if you would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand. And I do see Mr. Gillespie has his, has his hand raised, and I.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I don't know who's going first, I'll let Mr. Wood tell us that.
Looks like you're muted yourself, Jacob.
Okay, Mr. Renfro has the floor right now, and then we'll get to you, Mr. Gillespie, or if you're both part of Net Generation, however you want to do that, so.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Jacob, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity again, commissioners, for S and G to be able to come up and bring this to to the commission. Want to point out and on Chris's kind of introduction introduction on the on the project, the you know, our ask is essentially six hundred thousand and on the total, I think we had the demo costs involved of the pool and and the rodeo arena. So obviously that is a a cost, but when you look at pure comparison on on courts versus what it would would cost, the the city certainly wanted to bring that to the attention. But nevertheless, appreciate the opportunity. We've got a tremendous opportunity, I think, here for the community to have a a venue, have a a project that is a pure and and true community asset. We really do not have tennis courts right now. We're at a point where it's a safety and a liability issue. And I know the city officials have indicated that being brought to their attention by insurance carriers. So we're really looking at not only a need for the community, but really a safety and a liability issue that needs to be addressed. And we have and our group have have addressed and have had a great dialogue with the city and of course our partnership with USD three oh five to address this issue really over the last three years. Even prior to that, with another administration bringing this to the attention of of what needed to be done. Tennis is a sport, I can tell you, that has been part of the community's DNA for probably over sixty years, both at the youth and adult levels. It's a high school and a middle school sport and certainly a college sport with Kansas Wesleyan. It's a it's a lifelong sport. It's it's you've got people playing in their eighties and nineties in this community. You've got males and females playing well into their thirties, forties, fifties, sixties, and seventies on on leagues. You've got a strong youth program here, both at the private level and at the public level and both boys and girls. So it's it's really something that's been a part of this community. It's hard to put, you know, a priority on something like this because as we know, there's lots happening with the Parks and Recs needs. And, you know, one of the things that we want to try to bring out is, you know, this is truly an impactful resource and opportunity at a minimal expense, we believe, to the city based upon the funds that have been raised so far on this project, which is nearly one point three million. And there's more to come. A big part has been the the ability of the city to give us the the naming rights, which we deeply appreciate. And that was a big a big push and certainly will continue to be that as we we get through this. So we we all know that Salina, in in my mind, is is the best community on the planet. You know, whether we have tennis courts or not, it is. But we'd have a huge hole to fill if we don't have community tennis venue. And I think any community that is is strong has those types of opportunities. And we believe that that Salina needs it and the community supports it and we have the dollars to make it easier and to help the city out to make that happen. You know, a story was told to me recently as a middle school, their first day of practice, their girls team spent the first day of practice pulling weeds from the middle of the court. And, you know, we want to have sports or a- a- any sport is 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 huge for development of kids, whether whether they choose tennis or basketball or whatever. But it's it's kind of embarrassing when a community like Salina is so proud and so strong. We're at a point where a team has to spend their first day, a kid's youth team has to spend their first day pulling weeds from the middle of a tennis court. That it's sad and and we have the ability to to get that fixed. It's a sport that grows, is growing. I know it was mentioned in the study session, I got a chance to sit in on that about some of the venues in town that sometimes you can see them being used and others you cannot. And I I believe tennis is certainly a venue that because of the conditions of the courts or lack thereof, you don't have the participation. And I can speak anecdotally for many that people don't go out there because it isn't. It is a hazard and it's a liability. And and USDA has indicated to us that they cannot hold events here because of the court's conditions. So our our position on this is it's a community need. We're not claiming that we're going to bring in the US opener Wimbledon to Salina. That will be a supplemental side note to this, where there there'll be a potential to bring in events. But first and foremost, I think we need to address the needs of the community, which is we have no no community tennis courts. And and to take that a step further, probably close to having to condemn them to a point where it's it's a it's a liability to the city. So we're in a position, I think, to to bring this across the finish line. We know it's not easy. We know you have, there's lots of demands on the city. And and I don't envy your your position, but I do think we're we're in a position here to provide a wonderful opportunity for the city to do something that on their own would be significantly more difficult. And I think you've got the the citizens in the in the community Salina willing and able to to make that happen. So again, appreciate the opportunity to present that. And I know there's there's probably lots of questions, but we look forward to to bringing this across the finish line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Renfro. If I could ask you to to stick around for a little bit in case we do have some questions when we get to the commissioners and and members of the public. Mr. Gillespie, are you speaking on behalf of Net Generation or as a member of the public?
Well, I I'm a member of the public, so maybe raise my hand quickly here.
Okay, then we will. We will get to you here shortly when we have the public comment portion. Ms. Angel, are would you like to speak on behalf of Salina Net Generation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to dovetail quickly onto what Clark said. I too was in on the study session and was listening to the comments about the increase in use of the disc golf, pickleball, the increase in use of that, and then the trails. I know just at the club where I play in the last year, they have more than tripled their participants in the ten and under range. And in the last six to nine months, I think we've added twenty to twenty-five new adult players ranging in age from twenty-five to fifty-five, and they're all playing at least once a week. And the kids are all playing once or twice a week. They would play more if we had public courts and that was available to them for for more time to play without the charge of having the private club where we have to pay for court time. The committees work hard, but I did want to thank staff because they've really worked their tails off in helping us get this in front of the commission. So I want to thank staff and then thank you, Mayor, and the commissioners for considering the project.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. I will look to my fellow commissioners. Any questions for either staff or for the representatives from Net Generation?
A question for staff, Commissioner Davis. If you look on the park master plan, at one thirty-seven is a walkway around Centennial Park, which I would assume would be relatively inexpensive. At one forty-seven is the we get the first thing to address the tennis courts. Neither one of those are in current. But when had we planned and how had we planned to get the one point two million that we would have needed to carry it out, item number one forty-seven? If we were doing it ourselves and we were going to upgrade the courts we have already?
That that would have had to come out of the park sales tax, sir.
And financed over time.
So in the hierarchy of of planning, you know, those projects with the greatest bang for the buck, now when would that have naturally probably have occurred?
Well, I think you've identified a disconnect in the park master plan priorities and budget and maintenance. From a from just from the park master planning numerical ranking of them, it would put it somewhere out in the future quite a ways. The but deferred maintenance has already caught up with us and I don't know that would would have been practical to progress our way through, you know, unless we either limited the courts or or shut them down till we could get to them. So I I don't know if that's answering your question, but that priority list was not all inclusive. It didn't have all the answers as related to when maintenance needs might arise nor where the funding might come from. It was truly just kind of a first pass at trying to prioritize everything that was identified in the park master plan based on those those criteria that I articulated earlier.
Right. I mean, I I share Mr. Renfro's reasoning for why you know, Salina needs a facility, no doubt. You know, if our courts are a liability, you know, we can very easily shut them down if we had not otherwise planned to, I mean, if they weren't usable, wouldn't matter whether they were sitting there and not usable, whether we ripped them out. It's still a liability issue, but no. To save us four hundred thousand dollars of money that we hadn't planned to spend this year is not really saving it. It's like, wow, I bought this dress on, so look how much money I saved you. I saved you seven hundred dollars. No, but you spent four hundred to get it. So you actually spent four hundred dollars. Were we planning on spending this money? Now, because we we just got finished talking about and I'm not, has nothing to do with the, I love the project, don't get me wrong. But we got paid for it. Where is this? And we're paying for something that we ordinarily had not planned. And I noticed every couple of years, we get a great generational bargain that bumps everything on the CIP. And then in downtown probably was a generational project. But, you know, we go through this process and then we rip the process up every couple of years. If we got the money, it's no no big issue. I'm just wondering where where, because if we approve this, we're probably getting ourselves eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, and and the staff report goes into detail of how that, you know, that question came up when we this was this request was last before you. So staff's trying to address kind of where the funding might come from. And and when I get done here, I'll defer to to Ms. Pack and Mr. Cotton to walk you through that. And I don't disagree with your characterization of projects and opportunities or needs arise that cause us to to change our priorities. I think the staff report touches on it. We discussed it the last time it was before you. I do think this is a little bit unique compared to a new project to be constructed whole cloth in that we did, we undoubtedly have deferred maintenance challenges ahead of us that in regardless of of cost and regardless of prioritization, we were going to find ourselves having to address. Can't say that we, as part of that park master plan, had funding identified for all those items. But I think if you set aside the park master plan and just, you know, let let the clock run, we would find ourselves in a situation where we're doing Band-Aid approaches, for lack of a better description, at expense that are very short-lived and we'd just repeatedly be making spot repairs to no end satisfaction. But Debbie and Chris, do you want to speak to the the financial aspect of it and the the fiscal note in the blue sheet?
Sure, I can if Jacob, am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, thank you. This Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. Some of the information that we provided in the blue sheet was basically this where we are in some of the funds that we would anticipate this project being funded out of. The Parks Department, Parks and Rec is funded through the operating fund, the Special Parks Fund, and through the sales tax capital fund, as we just spoke about earlier. The Special Parks Fund currently, we are budgeting a fund balance in that fund of four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And the reason for that is over the past couple of years, we have not been spending money out of that fund just waiting for the master plan and things like that. So it's been kind of delayed. So we, as a couple of the options that we provided, we suggested using part of that funding for this particular project if you so chose to approve it. The other place that we found funding would be available is in the sales tax capital fund. When we looked at the historical spending out of that fund for parks, which we had initially said in the in the two thousand sixteen tax initiative would be five hundred thousand dollars annually, which over the last four years should have totaled about two million dollars. The parks, we've only spent about eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars on parks. So that leaves about eleven, one point one million dollars that has not been spent. And with COVID and the reduction of spending that we did last year so significantly, we're anticipating the fund balance in that fund at the end of twenty twenty-one to be about five point five million dollars. So we felt like there was some availability to to utilize those fund balances to possibly fund this project. One of the options was to do it totally out of cash, and this would be our recommended option, would be to take all of the demo costs and the cost to to take out the courts and the pools from the fund balance of the Special Parks Fund, which would leave it about thirty-five thousand dollars in fund balance. And then if you chose to fund the six hundred thousand dollar cash commitment, we would take that out of the unspent funding of the sales tax capital parks funding, which would leave that that amount still would be over five hundred thousand dollars if we did or did not choose to spend that. We also also could have the option of financing part of this. We looked at possibly financing a hundred thousand dollars only because that number fit into the budget of the Special Parks Fund. But we could certainly look at funding part of it through debt financing, but that's really not our or recommended option. We would recommend that we we do this project if you wanted to to support it out of the cash balances of those two funds.
My next question has nothing to do with this project specifically, but if we've got this cash, how come we didn't replace our thirty-two-year-old truck out of the same cash?
So you broke up.
How how come we haven't replaced the thirty-two-year-old truck sitting down there? If if we have extra money sitting in the rafters? You know, why why is this money not being, some of it anyway, being diverted for urgent needs? You know, we're going to need to pick cut the grass around this tennis facility.
Historically, we we segregated those funds. So we've, you know, we talked about where the vehicles and equipment were funded from, whether they were there from the department, the general fund, or the sales tax fund. And so if you remember that that broader spreadsheet of the the sales tax fund, there's a number of columns in it. The five hundred thousand dollar allocation was marketed as part of the the sales tax initiative and it's been budgeted for parks improvements. There's a separate and distinct column out of that same sales tax fund that is what we've been using for vehicles and equipment. So we've both in terms of the way that it was marketed and the way that it was structured, we've treated those as separate and distinct funding sources.
All right, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions or comments for staff?
Mayor Hodges, could I have a second to address something else that Mr. Davis asked?
Certainly. Go ahead, Mr. Cotton.
Um, Mr. Davis, you you'd asked about about budgeting to repair the existing courts. And one of the things that's been discussed is is I could I could put the money in the budget. I could have a budget request to fix the existing courts as they stand today. However, those those same cracks will will be back within two to three years. So it's just money that as 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 Mike had mentioned, it's just a Band-Aid. So if I put fifty-five thousand dollars into repairing Oakdale Park, I'll be back in front of you in two or three more years asking for the same amount of money to fix them again because the subsurface is so bad, they continue to crack and fall apart.
Have we ever considered just shutting down those courts completely? Just bulldoze them out? And that and replace them when the money is, you know, whenever this item would come up in the park master plan?
Admittedly, we've looked at this as a as a facility and programming that we needed to maintain. I don't know that at the staff level or the governing body level, there's been discussion about just kind of stepping away from offering tennis in the community.
Commissioner Davis, did you, did you, did you have anything else at this time?
Uh, no, I'm listening to the rest of the discussion.
Okay. Any of the other
Commissioner Hoppick here. I have some comments, but I'd like to hear from the public first.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan or Commissioner France, any questions for staff?
No questions.
Yeah, no, no questions here for staff. I think I understand the proposal.
Okie doke, thank you. The only question that I have is just in terms of the demo that is proposed in 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 the outline as it stands. We had I know that we had been presented with a proposal to use the former Oakdale Pool as a a plaza, a piece plaza of sorts and had told those organizers that 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 Um, had told those organizers that 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 wasn't a possibility. And I guess I'm just wondering if in terms of looking at demo versus repurposing things. I'd like to continue that discussion if there's a use for the old Oakdale Pool that that we can find. And I just threw out the peace plaza. I mean, there's, I'm sure there's other things that it could be used for as well. Or if the surface of the tennis courts at Sunset Park. Are sufficient to repurpose them for another use, I would ask that um. Rather than wholesale demolition, that we take into consideration any adaptive reuse that we might be able to have for. Um, for those facilities anyway. I mean, obviously, the Kenwood Pool, rodeo grounds. Um, uh, what was the, and my other question is. What about the clubhouse rehab? I I couldn't remember. What is, what is our stake in 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 the clubhouse rehab?
Um, our fac- our facilities maintenance department would would repair that and reopen it.
Okay.
Um, to to answer your a a little bit more information on Oakdale, um, specifically, most people. Recall it was, the the main use when it was filled in in the night, late 1950s was to repurpose it as an, as an ice skating rink. However. Um, in the 50s and 60s, the space was also used for community dances as well. So at one point in time, it did have other uses than what it's being used for today.
And we certainly can look at uh, repurposing. Another conversation, I think we had at the governing body level is. Uh, repurposing some of the tennis courts for the River Festival or or retaining some of that surface for uh, possibly food court area, something like that.
And I think that's just a a conversation that I'd like to see um, you know, ongoing. I I I don't know that, you know, that's included. I didn't see it mentioned in in the resolution of support for today, but um. I, it's something I would like to 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 keep in the back of our minds. And I know that there would be an issue with um. Uh, the Oakdale Pool, the former Oakdale Pool does have an art installation on it. And we've heard from Mr. Anderson in the past that there would be a specific process if we were to change the surface of that, that we had to deaccession and. You know, that artwork, contact the artists, et cetera, et cetera. So I know there's a, there's a process there as well that we need to be respectful of.
Mayor, I I I think that's a wonderful idea for repurposing that way. And we would not necessarily be under any time constraint. I mean, uh, repurposing that land would not interfere with construction of the tennis. Complex, would it?
No, sir.
Yeah, Oakdale Pool, Oakdale Tennis Courts would not interfere with the project.
Thank you. Any um, questions or comments from members of the public? I know that Mr. Gillespie had raised his hand earlier, if he's still. Uh, available and would like to speak.
You should have access, Mr. Gillespie.
Yes, yeah, I do. Uh, I'm happy to speak here. Yes, uh, first of all, I'd really like to thank uh, the city commissioners for all the efforts uh. You've been making in addressing the need for some sort of quality public tennis courts in Salina. And also to the Salina Net Foundation um, for all their project efforts in developing what I I believe is a meaningful. And hopefully affordable win-win uh, response to the problem we have of the deteriorating courts. I'm going to be a little bit redundant in some of my comments, but I I thought it was important to point out uh, some of our, our own experience with the public courts. Uh, I and my family have been residents of Salina for over 40 years. And during that time, I've been a recreational tennis player and I've regularly used the public courts in Salina. I can say probably for over 95% of my own tennis playing. And many others in Salina, from the young and the very old, very young to the old and the very old, would probably also say that the. That the courts they play on, the ones they can afford and readily access are those public courts. And as a really good lifetime sport, it's a popular one. And as such, I, I believe it will really remain so um. For some time. My youngest son was a high school tennis player here in Salina, and he placed in the state all four years and was also. A state tennis champion. And practically all of his learning of the game occurred on the Oakdale Courts. All of our family played tennis, some of us more than others. There's four of us, two kids. And since we were also lower income family as we raised our kids. None of their tennis development would have been possible without those tennis courts. That at the time, we recognized as a wonderful Salina asset. The court complex still is a special contribution to Salina life. But their playability now is clearly deteriorating and in some need. And safe and playable public courts is a particular lea- need for the many of us. Regular and also occasional players whose families would otherwise have limited access to this lifetime sport. Now, I'm over 70 years of age. Um, and I play with those who are younger and older. And I always value seeing the many times when families and their children are hitting on the courts. And using that special opportunity for accessing those public courts. So to me, the need for a solution here is pretty obvious, and I really uh, appreciate all the work that all of you have been putting into this effort to date. Um, but the second point I want to make, I think is also important. Um. I want to strongly urge the commission to somehow include in the planning and to support a dedicated hitting wall. Tennis hitting wall in whatever project solution, uh, solution you finally agree to. Um, this is so important for many players, but can be particularly important for the developing younger players. And that was exactly the case for me when I got interested in the sport when I was younger. Um, I won't tell you how long ago that was, but but it was also particularly important for my younger son, who played the the high school tennis. We lived across from Husner when he was young and going to elementary school. And after school, he would very often, and for several of those elementary years, hit outside the building classroom wall. Uh, perhaps to the chagrin of teachers who were diligently working inside in their classrooms after school. And he would uh, sometimes hit there until it was approaching dark. And he would probably say now, if he were here, that having that hitting wall of the building, which by the way is not there now. Uh, in the remodeling, was very important in his own tennis skill development. And as for myself, uh, and particularly during this pandemic time. While I've restricted my own tennis play with other, other people being extra careful about that. The present hitting wall at Oakdale has been a very important and a regular exercise and recreational outlet for me. And probably for some others too. Even last week, this past weekend, and even this afternoon. And and usually whenever the temperature was in the upper 40s and 50s, uh, I would, I would go out to hit. And I know uh, uh, another player who hits in the, when the temperature's in the 20s. So eh, this is, people use it. And I have seen others hitting on that wall a- as well. And I should say that while I've I've been hitting on the wall, it was not unusual to see families and others playing. On the the courts that were playable there at Oakdale. And I also saw people getting lessons and getting guidance from other adults and so on, e- even in a pretty chilly uh, atmosphere there. So having a hitting wall next to our public courts, I see is very important. Uh, it helped, it, am I using too much time? I'll be done soon.
Yeah, if you can wrap it up, that would be great. Because if you want to hear, I know that there's some other people I can see.
Yes, yeah, sure. Uh, so I I just see this is uh, th- this is excellent ex- exercise for uh, keeping one's skills in shape, waiting for a court to open and so on and so forth. Uh, so many love this sport. They grow to love it even more as they realize their ability to play the game at different levels. Uh, still remains with them over a lifetime. So I think we need a good and durable outdoor public courts for that. Uh, which can be played on most any time. And I believe when I'm saying all this now. That I'm really speaking for many past, present, and future players here in the Salina area who have helped to make this a tennis-recognized community. So I I just want to thank you all for your efforts one more time and and, you know, um, really appreciate your work. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie. Um, is there um, anyone else? I see a couple of raised hands and uh, Jacob will unmute you and. You'll be able to speak. I again, would just ask that you identify yourself by name and tell us where you're from.
Go ahead. Okay, I'm Ryan Stewart. Everybody here mean, see me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, first of all, and I would echo what everybody's saying about, thank you for all the efforts um. For for this project, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about uh, the slide, the situation for Salina South High School. And I have been the tennis coach, the girls tennis coach at Salina South High School for uh, 14 years now. And I'm starting my sixth season as the boys' coach, actually today. Um, I'm also the girls' basketball coach here at Salina uh, South, so that's why I'm kind of running in and out of this meeting. And. We have a playoff game tomorrow too. So, you know, there's a lot of things going on, but um, this is definitely a a huge, huge issue to me. Um, I have, I'm actually starting my 33rd season, um, so to speak. And no, I'm not that old, okay, but I I I'm the 33, with with the fall and spring seasons. Um, we've had, this is my 33rd tennis season. And quite frankly, on the south side, we have been fairly successful. Um, you know, obviously, everybody knows how talented Salina Central has been over the years in tennis. Um, but you know, we've, in Salina South, we've, we've done our fair share of winning, especially lately also. And and here's what I, here's what I know. Um, we have four courts at Jerry Ivy that are technically ours. Um, you know, they're not, they're the cities, but they're, you know, where we get to practice. And I have averaged, and I shouldn't say I, Salina South High School has averaged anywhere from 20 to 24 student athletes each and every year. Um, and quite frankly, this this spring, I've got, I have 28 boys that have signed up. I can't keep 28 boys um, with four courts. I just can't. Um, we have four, and and even honestly with four courts, it's it's amazing. I've kept what I have kept over the years. Um, because I'd like to give kids the opportunity and I'd like to give more kids the opportunity to play this sport. We have times where we have to work on doubles almost primarily. Um, we have, you know, we'll have three courts going on in our practices, and the fourth court, we're sitting there. Um, drilling with 12 kids as there's a doubles match going on right next to them. Um, we have to warm up at times on the, on the basketball court or the sand volleyball court. Um, it honestly is just, i- it's rough, you know, and and if you compare. Uh, where we're at, like five and six A tennis programs around the, around the state of Kansas, I guarantee you, we're towards the bottom 5 to 10% when it comes to facilities. Um, and I would also say that, you know, and I don't know if I should bring this up or not, but I'm going to. Our team has a nickname for a ball that hits the crack and we have to replay it. And we, it's Jerry Ivy. And we call it a jivvy, is what we call it. And at any point, and it's kind of fun, you know, we've made it eh, kind of a joke out of it. But if a ball hits a crack and it bounces like it would not bounce on a regular tennis court. Hey, you got a jivvy, it's a replay. And and quite frankly, I joke about it, but that tells you exactly the condition of our courts. And on a couple of courts, you know, the service line is so deteriorated. That if you actually hit a good serve, don't, you'll have a jivvy every time. So I guess it's a way to to make ourselves understand when we're hitting good serves, I guess. Uh, but bottom line is, is in, and we need something more than what we have. And a part of those 33 seasons that I've talked about, I was at Salina South Middle School as the head coach. Uh, for a lot of years before I took over the boys' job here at South High. And Sunset Park, as bad as Jerry Ivy is, is worse. I mean, it's way worse. Uh, there's three courts. It's nowhere close to a school. The gaps are literally three, you know, two foot big on some of those, those courts. And it's just, bottom line is, it's unplayable. Um, our district, our our league, the Arc Valley Chisholm Trail League is a very um, competitive league. And I, and I know Salina Central's courts are very, very nice, but you know, comparatively to what we're seeing and what we're playing on for other five and six A schools, it's just. I mean, if they had to see what I had to go through each and every day, and I keep saying I, don't take that the wrong way. It's what these kids have to go through. Um, and if I had more courts, I'm very confident I could keep, you know, upwards of 30 kids uh, given an opportunity. And out of my kids, and I'll, I'll stop with this, with this and let everybody move on. Um, we have some very high-level players, for sure, and we have a ton of beginners. And we have a lot of beginners that like to come out. And I think that's fantastic. And I would love to have more room for those beginners to play. Um, they could fall in love. And so what I'm trying to say is, is we're not there just to try to worry about those, um, you know, top-end kids. Um, you know, we're, we want to, we want to provide more opportunities for every kid that wants to learn how to play tennis. So. Um, that's, that's my little, my my piece. If anybody has any questions, please, please ask, and I'd be more than happy to to share more of my experiences. So. Again, I'm Ri- Ryan Stewart and been the coach at Salina South for quite some time now.
Coach, Coach Stewart, Commissioner Hoppe here. I have a quick question. Under the new plan, uh, I believe the courts at Jerry Ivy will be transferred to USD 305. And uh, how many courts will you be having available to your players at that point?
Well, I'm sure that's, that's undetermined. Um, I I, they haven't told me that for sure. I've, I've heard the number six, I've heard the number eight. Um, I can't, I would guess it would be in between there, but that's, I mean, there's no substantial number yet, but I would say no more than eight and six to eight is what the, what I've been hearing at least.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Coach um, Stewart. I appreciate it and appreciate all the work you do uh, with. The students at South High, the student athletes. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Daley, you should have access now.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Hi, I'm Brad Daley and my wife, Christina Daley, we're here. And we're here in support of next generation. So um. Our kids play sports through, through South High, through South Middle School. Clearly, clearly there's such a need. And I'd like to thank Coach Stewart. I know last year in the women's, or in the girls' tennis, he ran two practices so that he could keep all those beginners. And he put in a lot of time to to have run those two practices. So thank him. But I just hope uh, you guys approve this as a commission. I think there's such a need for it and next generation has raised the money now. To to help this project along. And I I hope it does, because I know how difficult that is to get those funds pledged and donated as well. And I I hope this moves forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. and Mrs. Daley. I appreciate the 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 remarks. Is there anyone else from the public that has questions or would like to make a remark? All right. Um, not getting the, seeing any hands myself and not getting the high sign from uh, Deputy City Manager uh, Wood. I'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion or action.
Question, could uh, staff just briefly summarize? Uh, the effect of the two different financing plans would have on our ability to spend on projects in the future?
And sorry, the ability to?
Spend on future uh, parks program in the, in the future. Uh, the differences in the fund balances. When you take out the, the 600,000 and and the different amounts of money. Did their financing plans listed in the blue sheet, option one and option two?
Yeah, that's correct. The second option actually in. Could, includes a debt financing option, which at the level that it's given is about $12,000 payment a year. Uh, what we did was we took out of that normal budget for the special sales or special parks fund. Um, it earns about $187,000 a year. With the anticipation with the last discussion that we would want to replace two parks a year, we thought that amount would be about 165,000. So that's why we thought it had the capacity to do a, a debt financing of about 100,000 out of that fund. That would leave the other portion of that um, um, funding out uh, into the special project, but uh, fund balance so that we could. Use it for some other need if it, if it arose. Um, the other, the other funding option is to take it out of the fund balance that we currently have in there. Uh, that. It's like if you have it in your savings and you're gonna, and you would be spending it now instead of saving it for some, some uh, future plan. It won't affect necessarily what we have intended to to spend in the next five years. So the numbers you saw in the study session. Um for parks replacements and things like that, neither of these plans will affect that. We've we've accounted for that spending in the future.
Alright, so the, and that was going to be one of my two remaining questions. Those 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 projects would be protected with either either.
The parks replacement projects would be replaced, would be protected as well as the five hundred thousand dollars per year. For uh the parks improvements from sales tax.
Alright, and kind of a rhetorical question, what 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 type of pressure do we need to hear from citizens and other parts of town to get? Less expensive projects done that are going to have large impact. You know, just for increasing their their quality life and and the vitality of the neighborhood. I'd really like to see us start doing something with Centennial Park, even if it means delaying during some of the 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 demo work on on in this project.
Yeah, I did want to mention that those three demo projects are ancillary to this particular project. So they could be delayed, we could close those, but as we were doing this project, we just felt like they they kind of melded together. So it kind of made sense to present it all at once, but there's no demand for that to happen today. Uh but there is some security and safety need to have that happen today or in the near future.
And Ms. Pack, how long um of a debt payment are we looking at?
We calculated that over ten years.
Okay, so that's well within the lifespan of the um the tennis courts and hopefully. Trying to find it in in the materials. What are we budgeting for annual maintenance on these courts? That would be a crisp question.
It looks like he's trying to unmute there.
Yes, ma'am. Um for the first six or seven years of the courts. Um we would need to put a little bit aside for resurfacing the courts um after that many years, but generally the maintenance on the courts. Um will will consist mostly of just replacing nets as the nets wear out or occasionally having to repair lights. But the 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 maintenance on the courts as post-tension cable court should be pretty minimal.
But um Mister, thank you, Mr. Cotton, but like ideally, what should we be setting back? Because I mean, if these courts have, you know, a twenty-year lifespan, shouldn't, I mean, just based on what we saw in terms of our. Um our park uh motor fleet, I mean, what ideally, what would we be putting back each year? In order to address those um longer-term maintenance or reconstruction needs?
Commissioner Hoppe here, I believe on the second page is that.
I knew it's not someplace I couldn't find it.
They have an estimated um every eight years, they would need to spend six thousand dollars per court to.
Okay, I got you.
So that would be a total of seventy-two thousand dollars every eight years, so.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Thank you. That's exactly what I was looking for. I knew I'd seen it someplace. Thank you.
So that same ten thousand either spent for debt financing could go into a sink fund to resurface the court?
Mm-hmm, yes.
If I might ask, the uh the uh, you talk about financing options, but it doesn't look like. Uh those are referred to in the resolution, so I presume that decision point will come later in this process somewhere.
Correct. I- if we pass the resolution of support today, then we'll, that'll give Salina Net Generation. Uh the indication of support and they'll continue to do their fundraising. We'll then put together both a an agreement between the city and Salina Net Generation as well as the the rest of the details that we're talking about here.
I I uh does Ms. Pack have something to say?
No.
I just, your square light up. Um you know, I I would say that that from my perspective, I'm I'm really pleased that we're going to get something done. With the, let me see if I can get my uh terminology, with the Kenwood Park Pool. Uh that should have been done years ago, uh filled in, something done with that facility. So I'm glad to see we're moving forward with that. Um I am, you know, I. I I struggle with the idea that we do a Parks Master Plan and it has certain priorities and then we step into the plan and. Suddenly it seems like it changed. You know, the baseball project was not there, but suddenly we're doing it. I mean, it was there in pieces. But they were ten years in the future and this, and the same thing, sort of things happening here. But I also realize that those sorts of things have to be flexible and that whoever the consultant was and whatever citizens they talked to. Uh you know, uh probably had good intentions, but uh it's not necessarily uh written in stone. Uh uh so we have to be a little bit flexible in that regard and and certainly. Having uh some private investment to partnership with uh. You know, adds a certain amount of attractiveness to the project. So. I, you know, I would have to say that generally I don't have a problem with the project. I think that it's a. Uh it's a good thing to proceed with. We clearly have issues with the existing courts. Um you know, uh you know, when you're having to warm up on sand volleyball courts, that just doesn't strike me as a good tennis warm-up. Uh even though I'm not a tennis player. Um but I do know that it's a sport that's relatively easy to participate in. Uh people can do it with a relatively small investment. And uh you know, it's, I've done it a few times and it's fun. I'm no good at it. Um but uh so I I think I would be generally supportive of 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 the project.
One question, as we provide for the total eight hundred sixty thousand, that does not obligate us to do the or or earmark. Does that money have to stay earmarked just for those specific M R projects? Is that money that we can massage and? You know, as like repurposing the the uh uh the old pool has been filled in?
The eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars does not include those three ancillary projects of demoing the courts. And demoing the Oakdale Pool. The eight hundred sixty-four is the six hundred thousand dollar cash in investment. And it's the Kenwood Pool Pool Demo, the Rodeo Grounds Demo, and the Clubhouse Rehab. That's all that's included in that eight hundred sixty-four. Any other, the other funding is clearly up to us whether we want to move forward with those projects.
But that's. Yet the elements that Debbie just described are all instrumental to the the tennis proposal that's before us.
Right.
Right, but the demo is listed on option one, it's listed under eight sixty-four. Unless I'm just reading this wrong.
It it is, but it's not included in the eight sixty-four.
Oh, I, okay, I was just on the same page as Commissioner Davis.
It it is confusing.
Sorry. Um the the eight sixty-four is the intent is that the 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 city is going to commit the eight sixty-four, six hundred to the tennis project. The optional um commitment for for option one is the demo of the Sunset Courts, the demo of the Oakdale Courts, and the demo of the Oakdale Pool. Those three ancillary projects are outside of the commitment that we would be making to the tennis project.
Okay, but however, if we want. They would, they would be feasible to do out in under option one from the special parks fund balance, or we could choose to do something else with that money.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you. That was not at all clear. I appreciate the question, Commissioner Davis, because I.
Yeah, that that that's another hundred fifty thousand dollars, so.
Yes.
So where are we pulling that out of the sky from?
That funding would be in option one would come from the fund balance of the special parks fund if we chose to do that in the near future. If we didn't choose to do that in the near future, we would still have that in that fund, that balance and that fund to spend on anything else. And then maybe budget those three projects later on within the, within the five hundred thousand dollars from parks. Or not do them at all. That that's.
Because we have, well, we have to do something with the remaining, with the old courts.
Yeah, that's the.
Put up, put up orange tape that says caution, don't cross, rip them up.
Right.
So that's, that's really a separate decision from this. Uh uh I would say it's very confusing to have that money included in the presentation. When it's not a part of this decision.
Yes.
I and and I think that, you know, it speaks to the need for us to um to get to that strategic planning process. Because I think this is precisely the kind of conversation that we need to have. Is it a hundred and fifty thousand for um these demolitions? Or, you know, you referenced um the facilities at Centennial Park. Right. Which are incredibly important too, or any number of the the needs that we saw highlighted by staff today in the study session. So. Right. So just in terms of Salina Net Generation's proposal today. Um does anyone have?
Yeah.
Questions?
Commissioner Hoppe here. Um yeah, I think the proposal that Salina Net Generation uh has come to us with is. Uh considerably more advantageous than I initially would have guessed it to be. Um if we were to tell them today, thank you, but no, thank you. We look, we are looking at refurbishing Oakdale Courts, the Jerry Ivy Courts. At a considerable expense and getting a a product that is inferior to what we're looking at. Um which we have to do. We either need to do some with those courts or we need to shut them down and tell Salina. The the citizens of Salina, thank you, but we're not going to allow tennis until we figure a way to fund it. Because uh those courts are becoming dangerous. I think Coach Stewart commented that they kind of joke about it, but it's no joke. If you have a child out there playing and somebody twists an ankle or breaks a leg or something on some of those cracks that we've seen before. Um also, um I'm agree with Commissioner uh Franz on the demolition of the pool. I was somewhat embarrassed as we were negotiating the lease with the county. And telling them how bad their facilities looked and asking them to put millions of dollars into those facilities. And I can't believe they never looked at us and said, why don't you take care of your property? I mean, I was, I just cringed thinking that was the next thing to come out of their mouth. Um the old shower house needs to be updated. I mean, if you go by and look at it, it's got rotting wood. It's got paint that's coming off of it. That pool is is being used as a uh facility to store equipment without a a fence around it to hide it. So. Um I think we take care of several problems, a a a cost that uh is beneficial to the to the taxpayer. So. Um I am strongly in favor of the Salina Net Generation proposal.
And if I, you know, I, you know, I'm I'm going to vote for this proposal because it's something that the city needs. And you know, we are going to spend some amount of money to either. Band-aid our current current uh courts or suffer the 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 public disappointment at having courts at all. But I I would implore our other commissioners and staff to be just as creative. In trying to find fixes for our other neighborhoods in town. You know, we have people who live here who aren't necessarily bringing in tournaments, but who still go to work every day. And their neighborhoods deserve to have recreational facilities. Uh Centennial Park being a big one. I mean, we've got a beautiful potential park there. The residents just want a walkway around it just to walk. Uh they're not asking us to landscape it. They'd probably landscape it for us. But we're going to have to be as creative for people who don't have big political lobbies as we are for this group. This is a, I know the people who've spoken. Yeah, you know, I I trust my kids with you anytime. Uh but you know, I want the same group of people to help us find creative solutions for these other needs in town. Thank you.
Um do we have a um? Is there action to be taken? Is someone willing to make a motion?
I will. Madam Mayor, uh move we approve Resolution twenty dash seven nine one three. As my understanding, we don't have to address the financing method that we're going to choose at this point. Is that correct?
Commissioner Hoppe, I second.
Madam Mayor, he referenced the wrong commission uh resolution number because it's misstated in that.
Yes, it's twenty-one day seven nine three seven, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
That's correct. Twenty-one, seven, nine, three, seven.
Twenty-one, seven, nine, three, seven.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, as as just correct.
And I second, and Commissioner Hoppe, I second it as with the correction being made.
Right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution number twenty-one dash seven nine three seven. Um expressing the intent of the governing body of the city of Salina, Kansas, in response to a proposal by Salina Net Generation. To enhance the tennis experience in the city of Salina. And before we take a roll call, I would like to thank um both Mr. Renfro. And Ms. Angel for being here today and for all the work that you've put in um developing this proposal. And um I'll be the first to admit, I um I'm very grateful that the private side has. Come up with the lion's share of 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 this um project. And again, thank you very much for doing your part to ensure that tennis is going to be available for uh future Salinas. Um with that, we will have a roll call, please. Commissioner Davis.
I.
Commissioner Franz.
I.
Mr. Hoppe.
I.
Commissioner Ryan.
I.
Mayor Hodges.
I.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you all very much for your attendance and for taking the time to be with us here today to express your support for the project. Thanks. Um, all right, take us to item seven point two.
Item seven point two, discussion on city commission meeting format.
Mister Wood.
All right, Mayor and Commissioners, Jacob Wood, Deputy City Manager. Last week's meeting, uh we did have a a short discussion about the city commission format. Um in response to uh the Sling County Health officials' new public health order. Um so on the twenty-second, uh the health order changed um to allow people to allow um fifty people in indoor spaces. Uh that's an increase from the fifteen that was allowed in the past. So that does kind of open the door for us to go back to in-person meetings. Um been down in the the commission chambers, uh working through things to try and figure out how we can make all of that work. And it looks like. Um there's a couple of options. If you, if the commission wants to just go back to regular meetings, uh we can certainly accommodate that with social distancing. Can't get a whole lot of people in the room. We can get about twenty-two people in that room with some overflow uh in the next room. So there's not a great deal of space there to do that. Uh we could do some sort of a hybrid meeting. Um so we could do a Zoom meeting and an in-person meeting in one oh seven. So that could mean that uh, you know, if there were commissioners. Individuals, commissioners, uh staff members that weren't comfortable meeting in that room. Um we could accommodate pretty much everybody uh and have a Zoom meeting and a commission meeting um in person. Um or we could continue to do uh what we're currently doing today and just keep doing Zoom meeting. It's really a a decision. Uh for the commission to make as as for what they want to, the meetings to look like in the future. All the technology in the room does work. We've, we've actually had a new cameras upgraded. The audio system is upgraded. Um we can stream the meeting and and do Zoom. Um so that anybody that's on the Zoom call, their their stuff will come through the audio in the room. Uh we've tested it a couple of times. We'll continue to test it uh to make sure that everything works um appropriately so that we can conduct meetings that way. We just need to know. I guess uh what direction the city commission would like to take. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Uh yeah, Jacob, if if a commissioner was absent for whatever reason. Uh would his or her picture like like we're doing now, would it be projected up onto the screen so that other commissioners would have, still have eye-to-eye contact?
Yes, so so way the, the way that we have it set up or the way we think we can make it work is the screen off to the side will actually be uh the Zoom meeting. So you'll be able to see on that screen, um anybody that is logged in to the Zoom meeting, the same way you can see. Uh the boxes on the screen right now. So that off to the side on the, on that screen would be anybody that logs in from the public, anybody that's a city staff member that's doing a presentation. Um certainly anybody that's from out of town that wanted to do a presentation or anything like that could do, you could do it in that way. So that that screen would be kind of segregated off to the side uh with um the same thing that you see here today. We could throw up presentations on that screen the same way that we do. Um now and members from the public will be able to see that um as well as um the the commission. And and actually, um how that would work is the chambers would also be a box. So you would have the camera that's in the room. Uh would participate in the Zoom meeting as one of the boxes on the screen. So um and those cameras can zoom. Uh you can, you know, get close to whoever's speaking in the room. Um so everybody would still be spaced out, but you know, if the. Um so everybody would still be spaced out, but you know, if the individual commissioner's talking, the Zoom, the the meeting would pan to that person. And they would pop up on the screen, on the Zoom screen, just just as they do today. Um so technology is actually working in our favor in in that matter. Everything's kind of up to speed and and works in a way that we we think we can make it work.
One other question, with the three broadcasting methods that we've tried, there were delays anywhere from two seconds to twenty three seconds. In your testing, is that delay been eliminated?
Uh so there still will be a delay um for the feed that goes to the access channels. Um but it will be, it will be, it will be cast, just like this meeting is cast on Zoom. Um and it will be cast, they will actually cast it on Zoom as well. So there'll be a little bit, not on Zoom, I mean on YouTube, I'm sorry. So there there will be a little bit of delay if you're watching it on TV. Um but in our tests, there has not been delay as far as, I mean, it's really the same delay that you have right now with me and you on Zoom. Is what we've experienced in our testing, so there's not.
It's it's a problem if we're voting on something and an I or a comes in after the issue's been closed and moved on to the to the next one, okay.
Yeah, you you shouldn't have that issue and I would anticipate if if uh, you know, depending on the choices of commissioners. If we wanna go to a hybrid meeting and and there was a commissioner that didn't feel comfortable coming in person. Um we would continue to do it kind of the same way we were doing Zoom. I would anticipate we'd probably want to do roll call votes in those instances anyway, just so that we're sure, we know who's voting on what. Uh depending on, you know, I mean, if we wanted to do this, uh you know, you could have anywhere from one commissioner in the room all the way up to all all five. It's really depends on your comfort level of being there in the room physically.
And I guess the reason I'm asking all these questions, I know I won't be here next Monday. So I'm just wanted to get all my options. So I I can remote in, it would be just like I'm sending my.
Yeah, I guess I'm in that vote today and uh I have had a few cutouts. So I almost missed the vote on that last subject, but uh uh it's worked pretty well. If if you can can rely on your internet wherever you are.
Mr. Wood, I was gonna ask what the person's experience who's participating remotely would be, but I think you've kind of addressed that. Is that they're gonna, they will be able to see what's transpiring in the commission chambers, they'll be able to see the commissioners as they speak. If somebody's at the podium, they'll be able to see that happen because whoever's operating the cameras hopefully will get panned. Uh uh to the proper location to to uh make sure that experience is uh is good. So thank you.
The and and we would have to do the same thing with the raising our digital hands and somebody would have to, you know, monitor and make sure that anybody on the Zoom call. Has the ability to to speak um during the appropriate times as we're doing it right now. It's really, really, it's almost the same as what we're doing right now, except for one of the boxes ends up being in the commission chambers. Um if that helps to explain how it works.
If I could interject one thing, uh Mr. Wood mentioned is social distancing. And technically, by definition, a mass gathering is when social distancing cannot be observed. So i- it will be permissible to have up to fifty people in a meeting without social distancing. So I I don't know that that's something that you wanna entertain, the everything the staff report uh provides in the way of numbers assumes that we. Continue to maintain social distancing, but from just a pure health order standpoint, we could have fifty people in that room without social distancing.
So the health, and I I'm asking out of ignorance right now, the health order does not require social distancing with fifty people in that room?
Yeah, the the definition of a mass gathering in the health order is um it it presumes that you cannot maintain social distancing. And then it permits a mass gathering up to fifty people. So um you could theoretically, I'm not saying that I'm recommending it for our meetings, but you could have up to fifty people without social distancing.
I would not be inclined to do that. I I would participate remotely uh in that case. But I do, I do recognize that there are people out there, there, you know, two sorts of people. There are those who uh prefer to participate remotely because they're being cautious about the about the coronavirus. And there are people who absolutely detest meetings on Zoom and they wanna be there in person. And to be honest with you, I'm a mix of those two people. I I like in-person conversations. But I also recognize that what we're doing now is is a required accommodation to the circumstances we find ourselves in. So I think if we can proceed with a hybrid approach that that uh kind of addresses both of those uh those needs. Under the health order and given the status of cases in the community, I I think we should try to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I I I would also like to voice my support for a hybrid model. As Commissioner Franz has noted, um we all have, uh we all assess risk differently. And we're all probably in different categories for having ha- been vaccinated, as are the people that want to interact with us. So um I would like to see a hybrid, a hybrid model be adopted for the time being.
And I would echo that, just so we're we're moving towards a, I hopefully unanimous uh decision about that.
Any questions or comments from the public on this issue? I don't think I even see any members of the public on our on our call at this point. Um with that, I'll bring it back to the commission and if someone would like to make a motion, I'd accept that.
Mayor, Commissioner Davis, I move to direct staff to prepare to transition to hybrid in-person virtual Zoom meetings. Beginning on March eighth, two thousand twenty one.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff to prepare to transition to hybrid in-person dash virtual Zoom meetings. Beginning on March eighth, twenty twenty one, which is our next commission meeting. I'll, oh, sorry, uh roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, motion passes five zero. And which brings us, we don't have any development business, um other business. Something that Commissioner Hoppick mentioned last week was um the potential for exemptions. For health and fitness centers and Mr. Schreg provided us an an update in his city manager report um today. But I thought since it had been brought up at the last meeting, um perhaps you could just share real briefly um what the status of that bill is.
Actually, I, everything I know is thanks to Deputy City Manager Wood, so I'll defer to him, he directs conversations on that.
Yeah, so so that amendment uh was actually to the bill that is uh is looking at the changes for property tax lid. Um and and it actually, that amendment actually never made it to the floor. Uh they did never put it forward. I think they got some n- negative press early on, um so it it really didn't ever come up. So it's not a concern at this point, um and that bill should be heard um in the next couple of weeks, they're gonna turn things around. So we should hear what what the final is on what's going on with the actual property tax lid part of all of that. Uh but we don't have clarity on that just at this point, but as far as gems uh go, it's it's a non-issue at this point.
Gotcha, and as far as what that property tax lid legislation will um contain, we don't, since we don't know that at this time. If it's something that staff feels like we need to respond to, I guess that can be put on our agenda and we.
On occasion, LKM will send out a notice with very short notice and I'll respond as the city manager on behalf of the organization. But if the opportunity, if the timing is such and the opportunity presents itself, we can certainly bring it to you for more formal action.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Who to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll see you next week.